All meetings are ordered. Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Johnston. Mayor Pro Tem Wyrich.
Here.
Councilmember Blatts.
Here.
Councilmember Francina.
Here.
Councilmember Haney.
Here.
Okay, we have a quorum. It's now in session. If you'll join me for a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Welcome, everybody. We have a full house. There are several presentations, so we're going to have to move everything along. Let me review the -- we have public comment before we hit the regular agenda. And during the public comment, we try to keep it down three minutes. You're not compelled to fill up the full three minutes.[76.45][76.45](Laughter) Dennis, if Dennis is here tonight. When you're done, you can then sit down. We'll try to remember to call people forward to the on-deck circle to expedite things. But I want to start off with our good friend Lenny Roberts, who has joined us. And I think Joan Kemper is also here. They would like to address the council and the community on behalf of the David Mason family. Go on up, Lenny. Joan, you want to join?
Okay, Mr. Mayor, thank you, sir. And members of the council, Jim Freyhoff, my old friend. I'll make this as quick as I can. We, when we knew of David's passing, we fortunately were able to see him earlier that day. And I immediately zeroed in on the pergola. That was his goal back in the 90s. And Joan Kemper was a very critical part of getting the financing and everything else, being supportive of that. I thought that there should be some recognition for David rather than something simple. I wanted to do something kind of big. I wanted to dedicate the pergola to Mr. Ojai. So immediately, I thought of a plaque, and I wrote some stuff out and talked to Colleen, and she designed it, and Colleen McDougall. And I have a couple of different things I'd like to show you. As some of you know, I have lost most of my central vision, so I'm not able to read what I wrote, and I don't want to guess. So maybe Brian Akins, if you wouldn't mind reading this for me and showing this. And I also really want to say to those of us who were there on Sunday night and to those of us who weren't, that would not have happened without this man.[201.12][201.12](Applause) This was the original design. If you, Kay, if you would give Brian the copies there, I'm going to let him to read one. This was the original design, although the verbiage on here has been changed from what that is. This is what we came up with, what Colleen and I came up with. The image of David here was taken by Graham Dunn. And as Colleen did for Eddie Callender at Soul Park, and as her dad did for Mr. Libby at the fountain, this image is sculptured, so it has, it's like a three-dimensional image. It's not going to be a--
Can you hold it up so everyone can see?
Okay, I will. And I'll hold it for those folks, too, or Brian will. Then there were some comments that this was kind of small, so I asked Colleen to do a bigger version, and she came up with this today. So we can, of course, do something in between. We can do this or that. Mr. Mayor Johnston and I had met maybe six weeks ago or so, shortly after David's death. And we went, we looked at the spot on the pergola, and it seems to be the arch that was dedicated by the Ojai Valley Inn in those days seems to be a perfect place to put this. It's close to the crosswalk, and you can't leave the fountain area without seeing this. So that was my suggestion. That's pretty much all I need to say about this, other than we have opened an account today at the Pacific Western Bank. Tom Farmer helped me with that so that we could expedite it without coming up with tax IDs and all of those kind of things. So we put on Facebook today where people can send their donations to pay for this plaque. And this plaque is kind of expensive. It keeps, seems to keep getting more expensive. But it is, for the record, it is the David Mason pergola plaque, care of Tom Farmer, because Tom has the, Tom has the P.O. box that I'm using to do this. And that's P.O. box 1223, 1223, at the post office, which is 93024. So that's really about it. I would like to, I'm going to leave a copy of this, the words with the council members. And if Brian would read that now, and when Brian is done, I would like to, I'd like Joan Kemper to say something. She was, as I said, very instrumental in the construction of the pergola in 1999, or the completion of the pergola. So Brian?
Thank you, Lenny. I'm going to do my best Ren Adam here. We remember Dave Mason, David Mason, whose vision of rebuilding this pergola became a reality upon its dedication July 4th, 1999. A lifelong resident of our community, Mr. Ojai was a USAF, United States Air Force veteran, philanthropist, and tireless volunteer at the Visitor Center and the Ojai Valley Museum, where he also served on the Board of Trustees. David was Ojai's 1986 Citizen of the Year, Grand Marshal of the 1999 Independence Day Parade, and served as Charter Chair of the Ojai Cultural Heritage Board. David will forever be remembered for his kindness, generosity, and love of Ojai.
I'm not quite sure what I can say, except that all of you, the pergola probably would not have been rebuilt if it hadn't been for David. There'd been two other attempts, and they failed. And he was a spearhead. And as I said the other night at the park, two members on the committee, the pergola committee, were sitting on the city council, but that didn't mean the city put any money into the rebuilding. It was all built with private funds and business donations. And the committee continues to meet. We're a good bunch. And I hope you do approve this, because I think it would be an addition to the pergola. Thank you.
And how should the checks be made out, Joan?
Checks should be made to the David Mason pergola fund, or David Mason, anything after David Mason is fine.[481.12][481.12](Laughter) Yeah, I was told at the bank today, if it's pergola fund, if it's, you know, whatever you call it, as long as David Mason is on there. Rita Farmer owns the P.O. box. Rita and Tom have the P.O. box--
And the P.O. box number again?
1223.
1223.
Yeah, so they were nice enough to offer that, because this is a temporary thing. Of course, we're going to get all this money in about four or five days, so--
It's faring in, really.
I'll bet it is, yeah.
It is coming in.
It is coming in.
And whatever we get, obviously, over that, you know, I'm just going to send back to people. I got calls from people in Iowa, I'm sorry, Idaho. Got a call from a lady this morning, yesterday morning, from Fair Oaks, California, and she's giving us $250 for this. Most of them are $100. Don Clough called me today. I don't know what he and Sheila are going to offer us, but I'm sure it will be a generous offer. So the community is responding to David, and I appreciate that. And I don't want to take any more of anybody's time, unless you have some questions for me.
Only the suggestion, which maybe has already been made, but that anybody who wishes to contribute to this might want to donate to the museum and David's memory.
Yes.
That would be a very appropriate gift.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you all.[561.41][561.41](Applause)
Mayor, can I make a comment?
Sure.
You know, this is not planned. I just wanted to quickly state this, that the community's lost pretty much three legs of its gigantic stool in Pat Weinberger and in David Mason. And I just wanted to let, I didn't want this moment to go by, the fact that Pat McPherson just recently passed away. And if it wasn't for Pat, you know, we'd still be, you know, rolled her, Pat and his group, but Pat did spearhead that. And I just, it's interesting, they say that, or you see it, that, you know, these deaths and communities are in our nations, are in the world, all comes in threes. And I'm just hoping that that's our three in this community for the short term. I'd also like to say something quickly about the fourth leg, if we could add it to the stool, and that would be Joan Kemper. She is a pillar in this community, and she's just an incredible, incredible woman, who I recently got to know better. And I just, and I know, Johnny, you know these folks well. Paul knows them well. Susan knows them real well. But we just can't miss out on this moment, the fact that these three beautiful women, or these three beautiful people are going to be lost to our community.
Thank you, Randy. Yeah, for those of you who attended the Sunday night memorial or commemoration of David's life, that, when people talk about Ojai being a unique place, that was a nice experience to, for the people who gathered, and how it's our town. I don't know, many of you may know that supposedly, when Thornton Wilder, who attended Thatcher School, based, it was at Grover's Corners in our town, the play somewhat on his experience in Ojai. And while we have a lot more people here now than they had back then, Sunday night was sort of a Grover's Corner moment. And thank you, Brian. I mean, that was a huge amount of work that, and a labor of love that I'm sure, even though David said he didn't want one, I think he'd have been very pleased the way it was handled.[709.23][709.23](Laughter) So, thank you all. Okay, let's see.
Does that require any action, your honor?
Well, I don't think we can tonight, can we?
What I would recommend would be that I can bring an item back, presumably for the consent calendar, which would be asking the city council in advance to accept the donation and authorize the city manager to work with the donors to get it installed. That way, we have pre-authorization. That would be my recommendation on how we move forward.
Right. Thank you, Paul, for clarifying that. Is Angelo here? Ah, there Angelo is. Go on down. I guess we're talking sort of about water.
For what?
I said, I guess we're talking sort of about water.
Never sorta, sir. Never sorta.
Well, silt beat water.[755.73][755.73](Laughter)
It's a pleasure to be back to speak with you about water again. Just a side note, that wonderful rain we had that put so much water in Lake Cassitas, we've, between use and evaporation, we've gone through about 45% of that. So we're on the way to using that up. Tonight, I'd like to talk with you about some breaking news that we have tonight. This is just like Channel 11. And that's sediment. We finally have a sediment report out of Lake Cassitas. Applause is well deserved. Yeah. Not for me, but that they finally got off, they finally got something published. So I don't know if you recall, but back about a year ago, I had done some study about accumulation of sediment in reservoirs, and came up in western reservoirs, there was a potential of .1% to .5% of capacity per year possible in accumulation of sediment. So this would amount to 250 acre-feet per year to over 1,000 acre-feet per year possible in Lake Cassitas. That would translate to 12,000 acre-feet to 50,000 acre-feet possible accumulation in Lake Cassitas. So I actually went on record with this statement to the Cassitas Board about a year ago, saying we could have at least 12,000 acre-feet of sediment in the lake. So here's the chronology of what's happened. I was told back in September of 2016 by Cassitas that their estimate was maybe around 1,000 acre-feet of sediment in the lake. There was just no sediment in the lake. And of course, I told them I thought there could be at least 12,700. They finally awarded a contract for a sediment survey in December of 2016. The survey was performed in February of this year, and it took them seven months to actually publish the results. And the results are that there are over 16,000 acre-feet of sediment in the lake when the lake is full. So what does that mean to us? It means to us that as of yesterday, September 11th, counting sediment, we have about 89,000 acre-feet of storage in the lake. Back at the end of the drought in December, we had about 89,000 acre-feet of storage in the lake, not counting sediment. So essentially, we're right back where we were nine months ago, when we count in all of the winter rain, plus consider sediment. And just a reminder, and I'll keep beating on this till you throw me out of here, that we used 117,000 acre-feet of water in the five-year drought. We have 89,000 acre-feet in the lake. So obviously, we cannot endure another five-year drought. Here's a little breakdown on the sediment distribution in the lake. The elevation of the water level is in the first column on the left. The old volume, not considering sediment, showed that, and you go to the new volume column, and then the sediment at that particular volume is shown in the last column. So if you move down to the 494.28 elevation, that's where we are as of yesterday. So the published figure for lake volume was 101,000 acre-feet. We actually have 89,000 acre-feet. So as we are today, we have 89,000 acre-feet of water and 12,000 acre-feet of sediment in the lake. So what does this mean so far as drought stages are concerned, since we're now dealing with 89,000 acre-feet? We can expect a stage-four drought declaration in about 10 months, or around July of 2018. A stage-five declaration would follow around May of 2019. And if we go at our usual use of water, we'll be out of water in four years. So we have about 17,000 acre-feet to go before we hit stage four. Again, out of water in four years if the drought resumes. So what if we had just four years? What if we had four years to come up with over 4 billion gallons of water per year for the Ojai Valley? And I calculated for the 2015-2016 water year that we use about 12,000 acre-feet of water per year in the Ojai Valley. And I finally put up a little chart for people that would like a better grasp of what an acre foot is. An acre foot is roughly, now I'm saying roughly, a football field covered in about one foot of water. Football field is about an acre, a little more, but that gives you some perspective. It's a lot of water. So what could we do? What could we do in four years to get us water if the drought returns? So I think our time is running out. I don't want to be Chicken Little running around saying the sky is falling, but I really think that we need to look that there's a finite possibility that we could have, that we can run out of water in four years. Here's a statement by this economist from the University of Arizona that says continued drought will force change. I really hope that we don't get into a situation where we get three years into a four-year drought, and we say, oh, my gosh, we really should do something, because it looks like this drought is here to stay. It's going to be too late. Don't want to cause panic, but we should pay attention to the fact of what are we going to do if this drought does return? So I talked about hope before, and I have some possibilities listed here for hope, that I've gone through most of them before. We still have our fingers crossed about the grand jury report, that that's going to stir up something in the county. But I'd like to talk with you more about new subsurface water sources for the Ojai Valley. These other ones, we've talked about before, and I think they're all possibilities to look at for the future. New subsurface water sources, I'd like to talk about fractured rock aquifers and mountain canyon basin aquifers. These are new potential underground water sources for the Ojai Valley. Here's a great depiction of what a fractured rock aquifer looks like. If you envision looking westward down the Ojai Valley, that center portion would be what our current basin looks like, sand and gravel, where we're pulling all of our water from the Ojai Basin now. And if we move to the right, we go up toward the Nordoff Ridge, and obviously, there's a lot of hard rock going up the ridge, covered by enough soil for the vegetation. But you can see the two wells on the right. Those drilled wells and rock are fractured rock wells, and in fractured rock, you can get a high-yield well, and you can get a low-yield well. So it's not much different than anywhere. You drill a well, you kind of pays your money and takes your chances. But what I want to show you, and the next slide, is an actual hard rock well being drilled in Ojai.[1191.33][1191.33](Blowing machine) Now, that foam is soap, and soap is used as lubricant in the bore for the drill. And then, that's all water coming out from what the drill is encountering. So these two new fractured rock wells were drilled in Senior Canyon this month. They're north of Ojai at about a 1,500-foot elevation up the Nordoff Ridge. They were drilled to depths of 360 and 455 feet. Total dissolved solids is good. The water is pretty good. And anticipated yield could be as high as 500 acre-feet per year from these two wells. And we think it's very possible that it's an absolutely brand-new water source. I wanted to do a quick cost analysis for you. These two wells are going to cost around $125,000 total. Right now, Senior Canyon is paying Cassitas $640 an acre-foot for water. And parenthetically, in five years, the $640 an acre-foot is going to $1,000 an acre-foot for water from Cassitas, due to their built-in 12% per year increase of rates. Now, remember a year ago when we were talking about, oh, my gosh, $1,000 an acre-foot for water? That's outrageous. Well, folks, it's here, and it's coming to the Ojai Valley soon. So what would it take? How much Cassitas water would it take to pay for those wells? About 195 acre-feet is what it would take to pay for those wells. So if you look at an anticipated output, or an hopeful output of 500 acre-feet per year, that's saving a lot of money over buying Cassitas water. Mountain canyon basin aquifers, this is something that we're just beginning to explore as a possibility. And here's a chart of different drainages, and you're all familiar with these, the Thatcher Reeves drainage, the Senior Canyon drainage, the Gridley drainage, the Cozy Dell drainage, and obviously, San Antonio Creek in the yellow down below. The Coyote Creek watershed has several complex drainages. There's a major fault, earthquake fault, running east to west. The blue circles there are, talking with this new team of geologists and scientists that know the Ojai Basin, are thinking that we have some large water-bearing zones in those four circles. The circle on the right is at Soul Park. The next one is at Ojai Valley Inn. And the two circles above Lake Cassitas are in this particular earthquake fault that runs north of Lake Cassitas. And the assumption is that that water is new water, different water. Again, we're just now exploring this potential for new sources. So for coming attractions, Einstein said, "Your imagination is your preview of life's coming attractions." Well, I think you should know that we have some imagination at work, and we're hoping that we can present to you in October a proposal, a brand-new proposal, a very comprehensive proposal, to make water life in Ojai self-sustaining. So more to come in October. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Angelo. I appreciate the update and the encouraging words. Okay, next up, Ojai Day poster, I understand is, ah, there we are.[1402.41][1402.41](Laughter)
Good evening, city councilmembers. This evening, I'm pleased to present to you the 2018 Ojai Day poster. Don't know how many people know, 2018 marks the 25-year anniversary of our Ojai Day mandala. And so this year, we've been very fortunate to have the artists who have worked for such a long time, for a quarter of a decade, on our signature art piece in, at the intersection of Signal and Ojai Avenue, designed the poster for us. I have to take just a minute to say a few words, because when I think of what makes Ojai the special place and community that it is, I can't help but think of these artists. They work all year long to plan, and to plan the design. Then they come, like, they work all day to mix the paint, get everything ready for the, you know, 100 children that show up, and they organize our young painters, who are so anxious to be involved and participate. And then, like, as the crowd thins out, they're there until 3, 4 o'clock in the morning, completing our masterpiece, and really pour their heart and soul into something that's for all of us to share and enjoy. Ojai Day is free for our community, and it's just really something that's unique to us. So I am proud, and proud and honored to work with them, provide them with support, and to have the opportunity to witness their genius just year after year. So without further ado, present to our 2018 Ojai Day poster, designed by our Ojai Day mandala artists, sponsored by Herald Printing. And Ojai Day will be on October 21st this year, from 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. The Lions Club Ojai Night will be from 5:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m., and we're looking forward to seeing everybody out there.
Okay, thank you, Amber.
Thank you very much for the opportunity to present to you guys. Have a nice evening.
Okay. This is just by way of announcement, for those of you who keep track of the anniversary of the American Constitution, but this Sunday is the 230th anniversary, and starts the Constitution Week, where the schools will be emphasizing this to the young people. Back in, what, 1787, our founding fathers, and I guess we say mother with Abigail, we can give her credit, too, the Constitution was written, and it did not solve our problems. What it did was, was gave us a framework with which we can then forever debate our problems. And this evening is a great example of the opportunity, the freedom to assemble, you know, the freedom of speech, the, well, I won't go into all of the freedom, freedom of the newspaper. I don't see anyone at the news table, but I assume there's someone back there taking notes. So anyway, it's, for those of you who are unaware of it, you might pass the word in your family and your friends. I think it's more important now than ever that we pay attention and become involved in the governance of the country. And I'm pleased to say that our school district is going to have a whole week where they will emphasize it. And we've created a proclamation, which I will present to the superintendent of public schools to be part of the kickoff on Monday. So the next item was a promised report back from our sheriff's office. The Mayor Pro Tem, city manager, and I got together with our chief to discuss some of the issues that were brought before the council almost a month ago. And so, Captain Freyhoff?
Well, thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, council, boss, staff, citizens. Yeah, about a month and a half ago, as most people are aware that are on Facebook at all, there was an issue that was brought forward about an arrest that took place here in the valley. And along with those, the accusations of the arrest, where this person was arrested for being under the influence of a controlled substance, was that they were clean, and in addition, that there were some accusations that this officer was targeting women. So I responded very quickly to the complaint on Facebook, letting them know that there's a manner of which to file a complaint, that I'm open to receiving those complaints. You can get a complaint at the police station, you can call the watch commander, you can ask for a sergeant, you can go online. We have complaint forms in both English and Spanish as well, so that we can actually investigate the wrongdoings of officers, or the perceived wrongdoings of officers. You know, the key being that we're not perfect, right? Policing is challenging, and we're not perfect, and there's a mechanism for us to control behavior of officers, and that's through being made aware of situations where they could have done something better or more appropriately, so that we can address those things, so they can learn from that and move on. Or if they've done something that's illegal, or unlawfully, or inappropriate, then we can take disciplinary actions as necessary. So I had an opportunity to meet with the mayor, the Mayor Pro Tem, and the city manager to discuss. You know, one of the concerns was, were these issues on body camera? And yes, all three of the issues that were brought up, I know there was only two speakers, but there was actually three incidents, and all three of them were on body camera. I can't get into the specifics of it because of personnel issues, but I can let you at least know that, yes, there are body camera footage on all of them, and it's, professional standards is looking into the complaints that have been filed. Once again, as your chief, I've laid out what my expectations are of the officers, that they'll be professional, courteous, and lawful in their conduct. And if they're not, there's a mechanism to file a complaint. We take the complaints very seriously. We rely very heavily on the public to do our job. We need to have the community's trust in what we're doing. This is not just for us to police this community, right? This is, as Sir Robert Peale says, is that, you know, the public is the police, and the police are the public. It's 100% about us as a team moving forward, and how we can keep us all safe. So once again, I think we've addressed what the concerns were. I think the big concern was whether or not there was body camera footage, and the officers know that that body camera there is to protect them, as well as to document any behavior, so we can see both sides of an argument, rather than just hearing one side as well. So I'm happy to answer any questions, Mayor, if you have any, or anybody from council.
Susan?
Yes, Chief Freyhoff.
Yes, Chief Fryhoff, first of all, thank you for responding so quickly, even though you were, I think, out of town. We appreciate that. So, but you actually haven't told us anything. Did you meet with the people again, or was there wrongdoing? Or, I mean, you've told us that it was on body camera, but did something occur that is of concern?
Okay, so because it's a personnel matter, I can't get into the specifics of it.
Okay.
So it is on body camera footage, and I will tell you that if there was any wrongdoing, it will be addressed appropriately.
Okay.
And if there's not, then so be it. The, we have a duty to protect, you know, we have, there's a lot of things that officers do that many people don't understand, and a lot of this I kind of got into on Facebook and said, "I cannot possibly teach a 26-week sheriff's academy, four weeks of patrol school, and case law decisions on Facebook." I did invite everybody to sign up for our Citizens Academy, which we were going to launch on October 11th, but as of right now, I've only received two applications. It's a very expensive thing to host, because we have officers that are coming up on overtime to present all the different aspects of what comes with a contract service. So the deadline for the applications will be September 26th. If I don't have 15 applications or students for the class by then, I'll have to postpone it until maybe the spring, so that we can really get the value out of it and showcase what we do and why we do it. I did meet with two of the complaining parties who reached out to me. So one, that filed the complaint, the first one that spoke, Mimi, I reached out to her after her complaint, and I met with her. She didn't want to come to the station, so I met her at Beacon Coffee instead, which I'm totally fine with not having home court advantage, I'm happy to meet anywhere. So we went to Beacon Coffee and had a good conversation, and she expressed to me what her concerns were. I walked her through the process of an 11:55 arrest, an under-the-influence arrest, and what the officer's looking for, what basically constitutes probable cause, and that I had, you know, other officers look to determine whether or not probable cause existed to make the arrest. And then, when the issue occurred with Lily, I did the same thing. After I reached out to her on Facebook to tell her to file a complaint, I sent her a private message and said that she's welcome to meet with me the following day, because I was still here on Friday. So she came into my office, and I met with her for about an hour on Friday, once again, discussed with her what occurred. I gave her the complaint form, let her fill it out in my office, and talked to her and her boyfriend in my office at length about the process and procedures from this point forward. They were both very grateful that I reached out to them. Like I said, I'm very concerned that if we have officers that are acting outside their scope, that we are going to deal with it appropriately. It's very important to me that we have the community's trust and support, because we cannot do our jobs without it.
Thank you. That's exactly what I wanted to know. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Yeah, I would just really encourage the citizens to apply for the Citizens Academy. I mean, you know, we have to walk the walk, and if we have concerns about the nature of community policing, this is a good step to take. And I appreciated your attitude and the priority you expressed of having policies and procedures that engender confidence in the community, because it is a partnership. And I appreciated that part of our discussion that we had. But I really would, I, people should, you know, I would encourage people to apply for that academy. I really would.
It's a lot of fun. You're going to hear and see things that you would not have otherwise got to see. We'll, you get a couple of tours, we'll take you to the jail, you get a look at the jail, you'll go to our dispatch center, our laboratory. I don't know, for people that don't know, the sheriff's office employees, like 17 scientists that work in our laboratory. We have our Sheriff's Academy, our heliport, which is also out in Camrio. We have our bomb technicians that would give a display out there as well. So it's quite the show.
And it's a good chance for people to express themselves, whether you like to hear what they say or not.
Well, no, it's certainly a good venue, and they're going to maybe get some better understanding of why, what we do. And we also do offer ride-alongs. If anybody would like to ride with us, by all means, we have an application, come ride with us, we'll show you what we do. We have nothing, we have nothing to hide, right? We are your police department. We are here for you, we're here to serve you, and we have very challenging times for all of us.
As a former graduate, back when Bob Brooks was the sheriff of your academy, I can assure everyone, it is very interesting, and there are some exercises that you actually engage in for your own personal safety, as well as a visit down to the academy. And they put you even through, if you'd like, through the "Don't Shoot" exercise, which is really eye-opening as to, even when it's just a drill, how much adrenaline flows through one's body when it starts. So, I mean, it's good for all of us to have a full understanding of how this works. I did, I'm not sure I was the third person that maybe you didn't talk with. I did put two or three calls in and got a call back from someone else, and they seemed to be satisfied that it had been properly addressed. And then you indicated, I don't know if I'm, I'll just say, that you did do some briefing on the force, reminding everybody that this is Ojai and this is not downtown Los Angeles, so they don't have to hit the streets running so hard in the event that they were doing that, and I don't think, I haven't seen much of that. But it's possible, and people do have to be reminded. It's a tough job out there, particularly at night.
Yeah, and I reminded the officers, I go, "You know, Ojai is very unique. It's, you know, here in Ojai, we are blessed that we have a lot of people who, at 2:00 in the morning, it would not be unusual to be out looking at the stars, right? Walking down the street, looking at the stars would not be unusual here. There are a lot of communities in this world that you could not do that." So I reminded the officers, "Listen, Ojai is a different place. Just remember that in your dealings with people. If you're not 100% confident that they're under the influence, don't arrest them. Because if they are truly struggling with abuse and addiction, they'll be high again tomorrow, and not because they want to, because they don't have, they can't control it."
Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Okay, I guess that brings us to public comment. This is the point at which citizens have...
Prove the agenda first.
Do we approve the agenda? Okay.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the agenda, the order of the agenda. That doesn't mean we're approving all the items at best, just that the order is being approved. If there's no objection, so ordered? Okay, now, public comment. This is the time where citizens have the opportunity to address the council on items that are not on the agenda. We ask that you keep your remarks as brief as possible. Three minutes is allotted to each citizen, and the council does not have the, other than to clarify something, they will not get, engage in the item because it's not on the agenda, and that's by the Brown Act. So I have some cards here. Let's see, we've heard from Lenny. Thank you, Lenny Roberts. Deborah Savala?
Yes.
Yes, Deborah, come on up. One of our citizens who recognizes the importance of emphasizing the Constitution.
Ask me about Constitution Week. Thank you very much for this opportunity this evening. I'm from Port Weneme, but I'm a fellow Ventura County resident. Our Constitution lays out our liberties and laws. That delivers the means for the lifestyles we all enjoy. Words and the ideas they convey throughout generations are the linchpins of our Constitution. On September 17th, 1787, 230 years ago, our Constitution was signed and ready to be submitted for ratification. Our founding fathers were so concerned with this document's words, that in addition to thousands of copies produced in English, they also produced 1,500 in German for Pennsylvania citizens, and several hundred in Dutch for New York's large ethnic population. In that spirit, I share with you, five of them in Spanish. Our founders were intimately familiar with how hard it is to craft this law-giving, life-affirming document, and want to make it possible for the vast majority of our nascent nation's population to understand the words they were getting ready to proclaim as the heart and soul of these United States. The original document from 1787 had 4,500 words. Our Bill of Rights, the first 10 amendments of our Constitution added four years later in 1791, contains 462 words. Slaves in our nation's history were freed by fewer than 500 words, and women throughout the United States, one suffrage with only 39 words. Today, our Constitution with its 27 amendments contains fewer than 8,000 words. These few words have influenced untold governments and countless constitutions throughout the world. And tonight, the city council has recognized that as a pentultimate aspect of our country, and we thank you very much. It honors all of us who have come here, it honors all of us who join us, and all the people in the world who share our values and our Judeo-Christian ethic. In closing, I add my 275 words here spoken tonight, my profound thanks to the council for taking this up and for involving the schools, saying happy 230 birthday to our Constitution.
Thank you, Deborah. Brian Akins. And I have Jay Murphy on deck. Jay wants to come down.
Thank you, mayor. Thank you, city council, city manager, staff. First of all, again, I just want to thank everybody for their attendance for Sunday night's event. We want to thank David for holding off the rain until after, shortly after the event took place. A lot of emails floating around on congratulating him on that negotiation with powers-to-be. And I also want to thank all of the committee members that met with us for four weeks to help put this together, all of the people behind the scenes, and those out in front of it, and the speakers that we had, great, great, great people who spoke that night. And I've told people how wonderful it was to, David acquiesced in June of 2016 to do an oral history interview, sat down with them for 2 hours and 30 minutes. From that, we gleaned little bits and samples that you could hear firsthand of different parts of David's life, and I just thought that was wonderful to be able to have that to share with us all. So again, thank you to everyone who was there Sunday night. If you didn't happen to be there Sunday night, Steve Adams, who does fabulous photos and videos, has recorded that. Our goal is to put that up on the museum's YouTube page, along with the slideshows and videos, and make that available so everybody can share in that fabulous night. Museum hat thing, another event that's coming up, not related to us, but community-related, is, we received a flyer that the Art Center on October 28th will be doing Mason Masks music, and they say it's mandatory requirement that you wear a mask. And that's October 28th, 2017, 7 to 9:30. So if people need more information, I suggest they contact the Art Center directly. Upcoming events for the museum this coming Friday is Third Friday Downtown. They've been participating in that for the community. Family Fun Day is coming this Saturday, September 16th, from 1:00 to 4:00. That's a free event for families, for children. Good things coming up. Town Talk, September 24th, Wildlife in the Valley. This is a continuation of the Ojai Valley Land Conservancy exhibit, which, again, a reminder that that exhibit will close on the 24th. So please come and visit that. Wonderful, wonderful group, wonderful people. Let's see. Also, there are, if people don't know, I think you know that there's joint art exhibit going on between the city of Ojai, the artists. I can see an artist here that has a work just like that that's being displayed in our permanent gallery in the front. So very similar to that, so I'm guessing that's one of the artists that we shared. So we encourage people to come and see the artists that are both, are part of our community, and that's a great venture. I'm out of town, or out of time, so again, thank you all for your support. Thank you to the community for your support, and most importantly, first, thank you to my wife who put up with six weeks of having the house destroyed with videotapes, pictures, and everything. And most importantly, a big thank you to our friend David Mason, who lived such a life that we could come together Sunday night and have 450 or 500 people show up with the expectation of rain and celebrate this wonderful friend of ours. So thank you.
Thank you, Brian. You're welcome. Deborah Pendry and Lanny Koffer on deck.
Hello, council and audience. My name is Jay Murphy, and I wanted to let everybody know that I'll be representing the Citizens Journal, which is an online newspaper in Ventura in the future. I'll be reporting on the meetings here, as well as whatever else anybody can come up with. So I just want to introduce myself and let you know that the journal is on Facebook under Citizens Journal. It's also a nice website, citizensjournal.us. The publisher is a gentleman named George Miller, and he's got five or six cities in the county covered. He wanted me to cover Ojai for him, so appreciate any feedback, any information that anybody has, feel free to send it to me at the journal or my regular email address, which is jaymurphy48@gmail.com. And I've been to a couple of the meetings. Number one, I can't believe you guys stay up as late as you do all the time like this. They're pretty marathon meetings, but I appreciate letting me sit in on the meetings, and hopefully we'll have a good couple of reports in the future. Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you. Deborah? Sorry, I got ahead of myself there, Lanny. I'll be right with you.
It's not unusual for 2:00 a.m. in the morning, folks to be looking up at the night skies. Why? Because we still can. I don't see the milkway very often, but we still have our night sky. So hi, I'm Deborah, representing the Ojai Valley Green Coalition. I chair the Dark Skies Initiative Work Group, and we invite the community to a Sky Glow Project screening and book signing this Friday, September 15th, 7 to 9 p.m., at the Thatcher School Milligan Center for the Performing Arts, and that's 5025 Thatcher Road. Just to let you know, the Sky Glow Project explores the history and mythology of celestial observation, the proliferation of electrical outdoor lighting that spurred the rise of sky glow, and the dark sky movement that's fighting to reclaim the night skies. We encourage students to come for free, but otherwise, we do have a suggested donation of $10 to support our group's efforts. And that also includes an entry into a drawing at the end of the program, two bottles of wine, and four tasting tickets, which are compliments of Topa Mountain Winery. We thank our hosts, the Thatcher School, and the financial support of the city of Ojai and Rotary Club of Ojai for making this important educational event possible. Then, the next day, Saturday, September 16th, meet coalition staff and members at the Libby Park Lower Tennis Court parking lot for our Ninth Annual Crete Cleanup Day in partnership with the Annual Coastal Cleanup Day. Again, city of Ojai's support allows the coalition to represent the city and the Ojai Valley at large, as all other Ventura County cities do participate and dedicate staff time to this annual event and effort. You would arrive at the Lower Tennis Court at 8:45. We pick up trash and recycling out of Ojai Creek from 9:00 a.m. to noon, and all of this gets logged on a data sheet, which is collected from all over the United States and actually all over the globe. The worldwide effort is through the Ocean Conservancy, and all this data helps to create legislation to prevent and reduce our junk from entering our waterways and the ocean, where it's literally wreaking havoc on marine life and ecosystems. So you can find more details at theojivaligreencoalition.org, or call our resource center at 805-669-8445 for both those events. And again, that'sojivaligreencoalition.org. Thank you.
Thank you, Deborah. I hate to do this, but because of the number of cards that we have, we've got to sort of shorten things up, because Jay Murphy was correct. We do stay here quite late, and we haven't even got to the business. So, Lanny, you come on up. I hope everybody will try to put the clock on the two-minute rather than the three, just to help us move it along a little bit. Nothing personal.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council. I'm here with my brother, Michael. We are producing the 24th Bowl Full of Blues this Saturday in Libby Bowl, and on behalf of the Community Advocacy Coalition of Ventura County. I'm here to follow up on a letter that we sent to all of you on August 3rd through your email process online, and we didn't hear anything back, so we just came down to talk to you. The gist of the letter was that we had our event last year, and we were on the calendar for this year, but we found out in July that you had had a window of time to receive fee waiver applications, and we were never informed about that. And we certainly are a community event. We have over 60 volunteers, 20 local business sponsors. Last year's proceeds benefited the Ojai Rec Department. We donated enough instruments to equip a whole blues rock band for their program. So we at least felt like we should be allowed to submit an application for a fee waiver, and so that was, the purpose of this letter was to request that you reconsider, since we were never notified about that timeframe. So I have, I still have another copy of the letter, I can resend it, or whatever you'd like me to do.
Well, we can't, it's not on the agenda, so we can't deal with it tonight.
No, I understand that.
But I'll be happy to meet with you individually and talk, you know, see what... But I'll be happy to meet with you individually and talk, you know, see what...
City Manager.
I don't know that I have had a chance to see that letter, Mr. Koffer, and so I'd like to see what I could do as the City Manager, as staff, since we administer that process. So, maybe we could meet, and if you have a copy of that, I'd be happy to take a look at the issue.
Okay, great. Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Lanny.
Lanny, could you send it again?
Ron Solarsano is the librarian here. Ah, there he is.
Hi, Dave.
Yeah. All right. Good evening, members of council. I do think I can keep this to
two minutes. My name is Ron Solarsano. I am the Regional Librarian for the Ojai Valley. And I just wanted to come here, as I sometimes do, to talk a little bit about some of the events that are coming up at the Ojai Library over the next few weeks. The first event here is coming up on this Saturday, September 16th. It's going to be at 3:00 PM. The Women's International League for Peace and Freedom is going to host a screening of the documentary film Divided: We Fall. This group holds these screenings on the third Saturday of each month, and they show a different film each time, and follow each screening with a group discussion that they facilitate. The next event I want to talk about is a little bit further out, but it is a really exciting one. On Thursday, October 5th, Opera Santa Barbara is going to come back to the Ojai Library to present a free noontime opera concert. This is the same group that's been performing with us during the spring for the last two years. They always set up in the main room of the library, and they have consistently given us some really great shows. We're incredibly happy to have them back to do that again. The last event, special event that I want to mention today, is that following Saturday on October 7th, we're going to have Shirley Waxman of the Santa Barbara Museum of Arts Community Speakers Program come to the library. She's going to deliver a talk entitled "East Meets West: Japanese Inspired from Monet to Van Gogh." This talk's going to explore the development of Japanese woodblock prints and the European artists who were inspired by the craze for all things Japanese. So, yeah, in addition to these special events, we also have all of our usual offerings, including our Monday Evening Knitting Clubs, Thursday Evening Writers Workshop, and the Early Literacy and Parent and Child Together classes that we hold on Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday mornings. You can find more information about all of these online at www.vencolibrary.org, or you can always call the library for more information. That's all I have right now. So, thanks for your time.
Thank you, Ron. Dale Hanson with Don Thingy on deck. Donnie out, yeah, you want to come on up, sit in the front row here. And then we have Lori Gray after Don.
I just want to wonder out loud why we don't have more advertising on the events coming to the Bowl. A couple of Saturdays ago, there was a group call, I think the Boogie Nights or something. It was hardly attended at all. And it was a great band. I didn't know about it, except someone told me. I mean, the city should do some advertising. I know Dave Mason's coming on the 23rd. I saw one line in the Ojai Valley News on that. He can pack the bowl. But we really need to do flyers out, or advertising OVN, or something, because it's a shame to have these good bands come, and there's almost no one there. So...
Mr. Mayor, in regard to that, I would like to see a future agenda item where the council could discuss some sort of a marquee showing the upcoming events at Libby Bowl, perhaps somewhere at the Y or someplace like that. I'd like to have it as a future agenda item.
I concur.
Thank you.
Actually, Mayor, if I could speak for a second. The Libby Bowl Committee is discussing these. We are discussing a marquee, and we are discussing marketing, and we will be bringing that back to council.
Okay, thank you. Don, Lori Gray on deck, and Christine, is it Spisato? Anyway, Christine, if you're out there, come on down, have a chair in front. Don, go.
Good evening, Council and staff. This comment relates to your earlier joint meeting with the Planning Commission and City Council regarding the completeness of items going before you and the Planning Commission. There have recently been a number of development projects that have not had previous conditions of approval. It went before you for a time extension, as well as SEQA documents that were dated back to 2009. Those items were not in your packet, not provided to the public. So I would request that any information going before the Planning Commission, as well as all commissions and the council, include any previous conditions of approval that you're taking action on, as well as any SEQA documents, to allow for transparency, informed decision-making, and public participation, which is at the heart of the environmental review process for SEQA. I understand that I could make a Public Records Act request. I do feel that that probably puts an undue burden on staff, and that by state law, that allows a 10-day response time, which sometimes is too short, to actually get that information, to be able to review it for a meeting. So I would appreciate either if the information were included in the packets, or if there's a link available on the website where we can review that information. Thank you.
City Manager, you get that? Okay, thanks. Lori Gray, Christine on deck.
Thank you so much. I'll be, I'll be brief. My name's Lori Gray. My husband Larry and I own the property at 412 North Signal Street. And I have a couple of very brief remarks about 410 Signal Street. And I'd like to quote from the Ojai Valley News, September 1st. "Serious code violations turned up. Where as many as 20 people have been living there." According to the city code enforcement officials, "The August 25th inspection revealed people living in sheds and RVs. Officials found numerous hazards, including improper wiring, overcrowding, a lack of plumbing, that resulted in unsafe and inhumane living conditions. The city is now working with the owner to correct these problems." A single family residence home. My husband and I have owned the property next door for 10 years. And we've been complaining about this for years. It's horrendous. It's absolutely intolerable. We are thrilled and very appreciative and thankful that hopefully, action is finally going to be taken, we think. We have very lovely tenants who've been living there for over years, for almost two years. They have constantly complained to us about the noise, all the people, the lack of parking. They've asked us to plant all new trees, to block the RVs and sheds, which are literally lined up on our fence. Although the city reports that 20 people are living there in this single-family home, we've heard that 40 people are living there. And as the article states, the owner is getting rent. And I want to, by the way, sincerely thank the city and code enforcement for their compassion, and for showing up when they red-tagged the property with social workers. I understand these are tough times. I'm not interested in throwing anyone out on the street. But I feel the situation needs to be compassionately resolved, and resolved without delay, and that we've complained for so long. It's unfair to our tenants who pay good rent to live like this. Not only has this situation obviously devalued our property, it's totally illegal. I remember complaining last winter, only to be told there was no code enforcement people who could even deal with this. We have photos, we have witnesses, the RVs, the sheds, the shoddy wiring, the plumbing problems, the noise, the music, all in plain sight. So, I'm just pleased that maybe something's being done. I don't know who to follow up with.
The City Manager would be a good start.
City Manager. But it's not fair for anyone to live in these inhumane conditions, and for us to sit there with 40 people illegally, living next door in sheds.
Thank you. I appreciate the feedback. Christine, with, is it Liz Martin? Is that? Okay, you're close.
Hi, thank you very much. My name is Christine Spisato, and I am the tenant of the home that my, that Lori Gray was just talking about, who is my landlord, with her husband Larry. My partner, Mary Mederos, and I moved to Ojai in February of 2016 because we love it. It's such a, as you all know, beautiful and special place. And I just wanted to follow up with a personal statement, saying that the only disappointment is that, you know, living in such a beautiful home that we do, and has a large, lovely backyard, and we have dogs, and we sit outside, and, you know, with beautiful oak trees in the back that are cared for, and the property that's cared for. And with the situation next door, you know, it's just really disappointing to sort of be subjected to the view of the ugliness, and, you know, all the people constantly going back and forth. And, you know, the other situation with the parking, which is really, we don't have, because our house is on a corner, we don't have an actual driveway, so we have to park next to the house. And many times, we can't even find parking, because there's many, I think they're running a business out of there. There's many pickup trucks and cars anyway. So, I just wanted to add a personal voice to, to the situation, so that you guys are aware of it, and let you know how it feels from, you know, coming from us as we live in the house. So, thank you for the opportunity.
Okay. And thank you for your comments. And I regret that it's taken this long, but I'm glad things are improving. And we'll stay after it. Tim Nafsigar? No, go ahead. Tim, you're on deck.
Okay, so my name is Lise Martin, and I live at 311 North Signal Street. I had emailed Dale Hanson about tiny homes, because I'm very interested in the possibility of having a really beautiful one in my backyard. It's something I've been visualizing for several years, and I have a family member I'd love to have live on the property with me. My cottage is a one-bedroom, one-bath, currently around 750 square feet, with a one-car garage. So, thank you for all the work that's been done on the ADUs. That's a possibility for me to do a conversion, either within the property, you know, that's already on the map of the garage, perhaps, or do something that's away, separate from the house, through the ADU. So I'm very grateful for that, and those laws that went into effect on August 24th. But I also am here speaking for tiny homes, and thinking that they're a wonderful opportunity for, again, owner-occupy properties. That's where I come from. I'd love for you to put it on the agenda as soon as possible. Thank you.
May I just quickly respond? Lise, it's going to be on the Planning Commission agenda in October, and I'll alert you to the date. And then from the Planning Commission, it will go before the City Council.
Okay.
And as you speak, there's a group of people meeting about this very thing. So, it's moving, it's coming forward.
Okay, well, thank you. I had emailed Dale, and she, you, and you. And so I just didn't know if anything, thank you, I wasn't fully informed. Okay.
I'll be in touch with you.
Okay, thank you. Tim, you're up. Severo Laras, you're on, you're on deck. Severo, you're on.
We're actually tag teaming, so I'm going to introduce him.
Still two minutes. Go ahead.
We'll be short. We'll be short than the, than our time card. I, Mayor Johnson, City Councilmember, staff, chief. My name is Severo Laras. I'm the current president of the Ojai Valley Green Coalition. And I wanted the opportunity to introduce our interim ED for the Green Coalition. I do want to say, first off, thank you to Russell Sidney, who has resigned as the ED, and for all his service that he has given to this community. And at the same time, I want to introduce our new interim, because he brings a new energy to the Coalition. I know we're going through a transition. We were going through one when Deborah left, and then Russell gave a lot of his time to Coalition, and now we're going to another one. But I have to say, it's funny how things, things fall into place, because I feel like we've only gotten stronger. The previous EDs have laid a solid foundation for us to keep the organization going. And I was going to read a little bit of Tim's resume and accomplishments, but I think that you could go on the website and read it. But I do have to say that personally, we have been working together the last month or so. And he's a quick learner. He's sharp, he's intelligent, and he is fairly young. So I, we're excited to have him at the Green Coalition. Thank you.
Yeah, I just say, my name's Tim. I'm really excited to be in this role, and work with the Green Coalition through this transition. And you know, I've been in the Valley for five years, and I know how much energy this community has around building resilience, and really looking forward to those, to building new partnerships and strengthening our foundation. So, thank you.
Welcome, Tim. Teal Rowe, followed by Ray Powers.
Mayor Johnson, City Councilmembers, everybody else. I want to thank you so much for supporting Citizens for Responsible Oil and Gas. And when I saw the map with all of the oil in the valley, I just, and I've seen a little bit in action at the county recently with Sea Frog, and I'm just so grateful that the City Council is willing to support them. Thank you. I also want to appreciate Public Works. And I don't know who does it, but they clean up the bottom of Shelf Road every day. And I've had such resentments about it, because I think, I want people to take their own bottles out. And they don't, and somebody takes them away. And all that dog do, it's gone. I also want to appreciate the Ojai Valley Land Conservancy. I know it's not the city, as well as, in particular, Rick Bisaccia, who no longer lives there. He's created a bridge between the citizens, and the mountains, and the authorities, in the most beautiful, beautiful way that I, the level of integrity is beyond my belief. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Teal. Ray?
Thank you, Mayor.
You haven't had enough of us tonight, have you?
Never. I love you guys. I'm here representing the Ojai International Cities of Peace. September 21st is the United Nations International Day of Peace. That's been happening for many, many, many years. Some of you may have seen the sign at the Y that is the only international cities of peace that's been actually posted out of the 166 global international cities of peace. Mayor Pro Tem Wyrick was there at the ribbon cutting a couple of years ago. So this is the third year we are doing an event. The previous two years were at the Art Center. This year, on Sunday, September 24th, from 11:00 AM to 5:00 PM, we'll be at Libby Park Gazebo. And in the park, thanks to a grant from the city, we were able to rent those spaces from the Rec Department. We have over 15 bands playing at the gazebo. Mayor Johnson's going to speak. Mayor Pro Tem Wyrick's going to speak. We've invited over 50 groups and organizations from the valley to come and have a table. It's a free event for the public to come. We're also honoring the International Feast for Peace. So we're inviting people to come and have a picnic at the park, and come enjoy music. And then we have some kids' art activities, and they'll be able to make their own peace pole. You may have seen them around the town, so they're going to be able to make little mini peace poles. We're also going to have a Letters to Leaders mailbox with our postcards and addresses, and we're going to mail off postcards to whichever national leaders you'd like to contact about different things. So again, that's September 24th, Sunday, 11:00 AM to 5:00 PM. And I hope everyone can come and join us. Thanks.
Thank you, Ray. Okay, we will now go back to regular.
You have another follow-up comment yet? He didn't want to cut in front of everybody. I see he's got the card.
Okay, yeah, okay. Come on down. For those of you who remain, I'm going to have to ask at future meetings, we'll post this, to ask if everybody will turn their cards in ahead of the meeting, so we can have some means of distributing the timing.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. This is not directed at you. Everybody's doing it. But we got to try to get it under control. Go.
All right, thanks for having me. My name is Jamie Bell. I'm the Operations Manager at AgMD Cannabis Dispensary here in Ojai. We, I just want to bring a few things up. We've, we've been patiently waiting for, you know, certain requirements and certain things to get going. I know it's a new thing. It's, it's new to everybody. It's, if, if you guys went ahead and did something, it'd be the first one in the county. I just wanted to, to bring, you know, we're, we're happy to, to be able to have a location. The, what we're seeing is, is it's, we come in as honest, law-abiding, you know, we want to do all these rules right. And we could have jumped in and started doing things and been under the radar. What, what was brought to my attention in the past couple of days was one of the other collectives is, you know, operating, doing all their work without, without any building permits. So, just kind of shows, just brings up to, you know, us that, you know, they're kind of disregarding the, the laws of, of, you know, Ojai. And it's not, I guess, not a good thing for, you know, to be doing that in such a new, in a new business, especially with this one. We don't want, you know, any bad things. So, pretty much that's it. I know, I ain't got much time, so that's all.
Could you say your name again?
Jamie Bell.
Jamie Bell?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. And I assume the City Manager's making a note, and will let us know what's going on?
Yes, I will. I will look into it, and I'll let the council know. Thank you.
Thank you, Jamie, for bringing that to our attention. Okay. Is there anybody else out there that I've missed, or that, okay, if not, the next item on the agenda is the Consent Calendar. Do I have a motion to?
Move approval.
Oh, second.
Moved and seconded. If there's no objection, so ordered. Okay, this takes us to public hearing, Historic Landmark Desert. Okay, this takes us to public hearing, historic landmark designation, Smith Hobson property. Mr. City Attorney, do I always ask you this question, do I open the hearing first or take the report first?
You can take the report first, then open the hearing.
Okay, the staff, we have staff here for report. Mr. City Manager.
Yes, very briefly, this matter was scheduled as a public hearing. As you know, the matter is being returned to the Historic Preservation Commission to correct some procedural issues. Therefore, we are simply requesting that the City Council open the public hearing tonight and continue to a date certain. We would recommend that you continue that to the October 10th, 2017 City Council meeting.
And they will be meeting this week.
Historic Preservation Commission is meeting this Thursday, thank you, yes. Thank you.
Okay, okay, well, then I will open the meeting. Or pardon me, I've already done that. We'll open the hearing, pardon me. The public hearing is now open. I don't have any cards on the subject. Do I have a motion for a continuance?
Move continuance.
Okay, moved and seconded. There's no objections, so ordered, and that will move to October 10th for those who are interested in the topic. Okay, next item, tentative parcel map to subdivide two parcels to create three. Yeah, we have a staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Winiger, our Inum Community Development Director, will be providing the report.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this is a proposal for a tentative parcel map for a property located at 712 Drown Avenue. The property currently is, consists of two parcels. It's 1.13 acres in size. There is currently a residence on the front portion of the parcel along Drown Avenue. The applicant proposes to re-subdivide the property to create three parcels. At the, upon subdivision, the one parcel would contain the existing residence, and there would be two vacant parcels which could be developed for single-family homes. The proposal is consistent with the zoning ordinance and the general plan. The zoning ordinance would actually allow potentially four parcels of land to be subdivided. However, the city's subdivision regulations and zoning regulations regarding lot sizes and dimensions only permits the three parcels that are proposed. The property, the newly subdivided property would be served by a private street located along the north property line. As I said before, two potential single-family residences could be developed in the future. There's no pending application for either of those parcels, and I don't anticipate anything in the near future. At that time, depending on what is proposed, would determine the type of permit required and permit process review, and things such as off-street parking would be addressed at that time. If they are single-story, single-family residences, it would be an administrative process. If two-story residences are proposed, it would be a design review permit, which would be reviewed by the Planning Commission. Your staff report addresses a number of issues. At the Planning Commission, the principal concern concerned off-site drainage, or drainage that flows through this property. This property both generates its own runoff as well as accepts runoff from upstream parcels. That runoff, which is currently sheet flow, will be diverted into a onsite channel which will be maintained by the property owners, and should improve the off-site drainage in this area. That concludes my presentation, Mr. Mayor. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, Bill.
Couple of questions, just for clarification.
Yes, sir.
I'll start with the last point you made, because I did hear some of that testimony, the concern on the stormwater easement.
Yes.
We see on the map where the storm easement goes, and, you know, where it starts on one property line and ends on the other. Is there any, and then we have another parcel for that stormwater before it gets to Grand Avenue. Now, am I correct so far?
That's correct, yes.
And is there any, what happens to that stormwater when it crosses to the next property line, crosses to the next parcel?
Mr. Mayor, Mayor Protem, it enters into a storm drain at that point, it's a...
Oh, there is a storm drain on the private property?
Correct, that is correct.
Okay, so, I was concerned about where it exited, but it exits into a storm drain. I didn't see that noted.
Correct, it's a concrete line channel, box channel.
And then, and the other question is, you said that that stormwater easement was, is it just the responsibility of parcel three to maintain that, or all three parcels?
There's a condition on there, requires all three parcels to participate in that, maintenance of that improvement.
And is that also the case with the private road?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I just have a question. What's on the parcel to the north of this parcel?
To the north is a single-family residence.
Okay, so, does this road, this Ingris and Egris Road, in any way impact that parcel to the north?
It would be separated by a block wall, so there would be hopefully minimal intrusions. There may be some noise from cars parking and starting and what have you, but it's a deep lot.
I have a question. Mr., also, my mind is blank. Okay, my question, I wanna be clear. He has, these people have the legal right to, it's legal, it's not our, it's not our decision whether or not they can split the lot, or do they have a legal right to split the lot three-way instead of two, three? And then, all of these lots have, at the same time, a legal right to build an accessory dwelling unit? So, we're talking, and it's, and we can anticipate, because there's not that many lots for sale, that these lots will be sold, there will be homes built, and possibly accessory dwelling units.
So, to answer those questions, the property owner has the legal right to apply to subdivide the properties two into three. The council has a discretionary decision to decide whether to approve that. In making that decision, you have to find, do you find that based on the record before you, substantial evidence supports making the findings that the subdivision is consistent with the State Subdivision Map Act and consistent with the city's parcel standards? Or do you find that some evidence shows that one of those things is not true? So, it's a decision of the council, but it has to be based and rooted in the evidence before you. And in particular, in evaluating that, consider the city's standards for proposed parcels, which are discussed in detail in the staff report, page 3-4. The second question, if the subdivision is approved, three, two into three parcels, that would be three single-family parcels, each of which could have a house built. If that house is a single-family house as proposed, then all three of them could have a second unit built as well.
Okay, thank you.
Matt, where's the property line now?
I believe there's an exhibit that shows the existing...
I didn't, if it's there, I didn't see it, I apologize.
Is it just, is it the outer boundary of the three parcels in Attachment E? Oh, that's right, it's two, it's two parcels, yeah.
Yes, it's located essentially behind the existing residence.
All right.
I apologize, I don't see...
Yeah, you mean the property line of the two parcels that are there now, yeah. There are assessors? There would be.
Okay, while you're looking, can I ask Matt one more question? It says in the Planning Commission minutes, the neighbor at 17, I went, first of all, I went to the property and I walked around a bit so I could be familiar with it, and the neighbor states that when he purchased this home five years ago, he was assured of a prohibition on the development of the property.
I do not know what the property owner was told, nor by who, but that is not a correct statement.
Okay.
The city is not aware of any existing prohibition on the development of this property, but I can't speak to what that person was told, or when they were told, or by who. But there's no current prohibition the city can enforce, absolutely prohibiting development on the back portion of this property.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Mr. Winiger, Matt?
Yeah, right.
In Attachment E, three of three, the one with the side access and the noting of the concrete drain and all that kind of thing, after the page of the parcel split, I noticed, is that possibly the property line that Councilman Lats asked about, where you see there's a dash-dot line of zoning RO going straight and then making a left turn? Is that the existing property line for one of the...
No, sir, I think those are anticipated utility connections.
Okay, I'm sorry, okay. I didn't read the fine print, my eyes are getting bad. All right, so we don't really know what the existing property lines are?
I'll ask the applicant to provide you that information.
Okay. We have it?
Apparently.
Good.
You're looking for the existing property line?
It's just the one...
Can you come to the...
You need to be on the microphone.
Sorry, my name is Allison Reed, I'm one of the owners of 712 Drown, and you're asking for the current single property line?
Well, there's two parcels, so...
The two parcels, and it's two long, narrow ones.
Okay.
And so, the parcel goes right down kind of the middle lengthwise.
As defined, is the front edge on Drown Avenue basically bisect that, go straight, straight back?
Yeah, the two APNs, that way.
Okay.
Does that answer your question?
Boy, that's odd.
How is there access, then, to the southern part of that?
That is the current one. The proposed is a street along the north side.
Right, but you have two parcels there now, and both parcels must have access, don't they?
No, they're two APNs.
So, one of them is landlocked?
Well, right now, I wasn't, actually, I'm sorry, I wasn't prepared to be up here. My representative didn't show. And right now, it's really kind of one parcel, there's one access, but it's two APNs. And I don't think that it was ever, I mean, it's never been built with multiple houses.
It's too long.
Too long APNs. I think that there was a lot line adjustment.
Too long, narrow parcels right now.
And a lot, I mean, I'm guessing the lot line adjustment was with the neighboring house, and that's where the second APN came into. I'm, I am just guessing.
Can you roughly tell us where the existing house is?
The existing house is right on Drown, close to the street.
Is it north or south?
It is on the north.
North, yeah.
And the south side with the, there was a lot line adjustment, I don't know, maybe eight years ago? And so, on the south side, I'm thinking that was the other APN, and that's why it's two long, narrow ones, because they were both on the Drown. Does that make sense at all?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I just wanna ask, you, you said your representative didn't show?
You know, Ben Turner?
Uh-huh, Ben, yeah.
Yeah, I'm not exactly sure what happened. We just tried to contact him, and he's not here. So, I wasn't prepared to speak.
So, we might need to wait.
I don't know. What would you like to do? Would you like to continue, or, I'm sorry, I mean...
Yeah, I have to say, I'm not exactly sure of the whole process here, and so, Ben is supposed to present, I'm assuming?
Yeah.
Well, at this stage, we're supposed to be getting staff report and information, of which you've been helpful. Let's ask, is there any, are there other questions of staff before we go to the next portion of this? I just have a, if Mr. Summers knows, are both of the lots currently legal lots?
Yeah, they're both, there are two current legal lots, although I believe the southern lot isn't sufficiently large to be developable at present, given the way it's configured. It's long and not very wide.
Okay, then, when was the lot line adjustment done?
I...
Why would they, why would we do a lot line adjustment, making one parcel undevelopable?
That one, I'm not entirely sure of the history of the lot line adjustment, so I'm gonna suggest that either Mr. Winiger speak to that.
I think...
I don't wanna speculate, because I'm not familiar with the facts of that lot line adjustment.
Here we have a parcel, we've already done one lot line adjustment for, and we don't have any history on it unless Mr. Winiger does.
It was before we bought it.
It would be nice to know what the findings and rationale were for that particular lot line adjustment before we decided to subdivide it. Right, absolutely. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Matt? I have a couple, but...
Can I just make a comment, or, go ahead, very questions, yeah.
Matt, when's the last time our general plan was reviewed, do you know?
I believe it's about, been about 20 years, if I'm...
The housing element was less than 20 years ago.
Housing element was 2013, December 2013.
Correct. The rest of the general plan is for that.
The land use element.
The land use element would be a while ago.
Right, okay, but, yeah, but in general, how many lots do we have in the inventory, so to speak, properties of this nature that would be asking for similar treatment of...
I'm not aware of a lot that would be fallen in this category. I'm sure there are some, but I'm not...
The whole block, as I recall, has some very deep properties.
There are, there are deep properties there, and I've driven that a number of times, but there are also very narrow properties, generally speaking, too, that would have to be completely redeveloped because the present residents would probably prohibit additional access that would conform to the code.
Right, so instead of just re-dividing the property for two lots, we're actually increasing...
Adding one.
Yeah, we're adding one, you know, and I'm just curious as to what the precedent we'd be setting for doing that in that neighborhood. Does the ordinance that requires, I think it was adopted, that requires that water not be discharged off of a lot when they develop it?
Generally requires that it can't increase the amount of discharge.
Right.
It can, it can continue to transmit the existing volumes, but generally cannot increase it, anything over and above existing current volumes have to be retained onsite.
Right, so the lot coverage, when you split it into three, and you have three structures plus three accessory units potentially, is that an issue that gets dealt with later, with the same standard being applied to it?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, just one more question of Mr. Summers. What is the difference in the standard or the finding to allow a lot line adjustment versus a subdivision?
Sure, a lot line adjustment is allowable when you have up to four parcels and no new parcels are being created. There's no net increase, you can have a net loss, three to two, or two to two, but not when you go three to four, or three to, two to three. That has to be subdivision, one of the several varieties of subdivisions. And the findings are that it would be consistent with the city's lot line standards or parcel standards, or if an existing parcel is, a pair of parcels are non-conforming, that you're making it better, if not all the way to compliant, at least reducing the non-conformities. Versus a subdivision, if you're creating new parcels that are to be developable, they have to meet the standards, or else the council could perhaps approve a variance for a new, a new buildable parcel. It has to meet the city's parcel standards. And it also has to meet what is defined in the code as good subdivision standards, good engineering standards, in terms of a parcel that's adequate in size and shape to accommodate the proposed uses that are consistent with the zone, a parcel that has adequate utilities, has adequate road access, has adequate ability to host the use that's consistent with that zoning. In other words, you wouldn't, it would be inappropriate to approve a subdivision that would create a parcel that's too small to handle the kinds of uses that that zone accommodates, nor to create a parcel that's too weird in shape to accommodate the uses that that zone allows.
Are we deliberating yet, or there's still any questions?
No, no, we hadn't even known the public hearing. We were asking for information. Can anybody else have any? Okay.
Did we answer the question about the precedent? You weren't sure how many lots of this nature?
No, I'm not, I don't know. We have not done an inventory to determine that.
In one comment on that, if I may, each application is considered on its own merits, so if you approve this one, you aren't in any way required to approve the next one.
Okay.
Each is tested on its own standards and its own facts.
Okay, thank you.
Right, well, we would be basically saying that as of now, this is a good idea to increase the buildable lots for people in similar circumstance. That's the reason I asked the question about how long has it been since we've looked at the general plan.
I understand, but I think what the city attorney just said is, there isn't a precedent associated with...
There's not a legal precedent, it may create a political precedent.
Political precedent, right.
Well, yeah, political, just a fairness question. If one person's allowed to do it, then we should be, you know...
I mean, from a legal perspective, if you were to later make a different decision than the decision on this property, you have to have evidence supporting that different decision.
Right.
Each is tested on their own facts.
The question is the characteristics of this property, though.
Correct.
So, Mayor, are we, are we gonna bring back to us the original lot line adjustment from nine years ago? Can we have that information?
If the council wishes, the matter could be continued to provide that information, certainly. And it may be the case that the applicant might have, well, if Mr. Turner's not present, he may have that information, but he doesn't seem to be present.
Based on the conversations I just heard, it sounds like that we did a lot line adjustment, we created a lot that's unbuildable. My concern is, I haven't even heard anything about easements, especially for fire. I just, I have a lot of concerns about this in general.
I think they did mention the fire department.
Okay, well, we're starting to move into deliberation, rather than to inquiry, but good, I appreciate your comment, Randy. The, okay, I guess we'll open the hearing. Hearing is now open. Matt, did you have something you wanted to add?
I was just going to offer that I could try and look for the file while you're taking public testimony, if that's the pleasure of the council.
Yeah, no, thank you. Okay, the hearing is now open, I don't have any cards on the... Oh, pardon me.
There were two, there were two.
Sorry. Don, no, pardon, Don's first, then we have Daniel.
That's why you couldn't find it.
Yeah, right, under L.
I'm Dan Lukashevich, I live at 806 Grand Avenue, and my property, part of my property about 712 Drown. And thank Mr. Mayor Protem for asking a couple of good questions. There's a, I've lived there for about 29 years, I've gone through several storms there, there's thousands of gallons of water that come across that property. It drains from, as you pointed out, from all the properties up Drown, it ends up in the 712 area, and then drains through the two-by-two concrete drain between 802 and 804 Grand. And that goes directly into the sewage system, the floodwater system. Now, we have access to that now, because there's nothing built there, so we can climb over the fence and clean that drain out. When that gets plugged up, the water will flow right through into 804 and 802, and then it comes around to mine at 806. And it's, it's a serious amount of water. I brought pictures to the planning commission and showed them the drain filled in this last storm, which, you know, a lot of water soaked into the ground, and there's still tons of water that come through there. This is also a FEMA flood area in the latest designation, my property, part of my property and part of the, and the southern area of 712. We get, the Sunset Place area is about four feet above my property, so as the water soaks through, it comes into my property, you know, over, if there's two or three storms, we get a lot of water flow through there. And if they build a concrete block wall along the northern border, that will just create a dam from all the water coming down from Drown. And you also have a situation where, you know, on Drown there, the little cottage lot up there, and you could end up with the same type of situation in here, if it's not controlled, where you have several little guesthouses built on the back of these other lots, since they're allowed that way. And also, so, my main concern is this water feature that has been constructed, where the water is to run down the side of the property, then make a right turn, and then crash into this sewage, you know, into our drainage canal. And there's no reason why the water feature can't come down through the middle of the property, and, you know, maintain the proper drainage that has gone on for several years. So, that's, the water is my biggest thing. You're putting the houses 802 and 804 kind of in jeopardy, if there's any overflow, it's going right through their yards.
Okay.
Question.
Thank you very much.
A question, and...
Yeah, question, sir. Who's responsible for maintaining that stormwater covert from the north end of the junction of your two properties to Grand?
We are, we just clean it out, you know, as it needs to be cleaned out, and, you know...
So, this was a privately built intake?
No, no, this is part of the flood control setup.
But, but...
It's a hidden thing, it's a secret channel that...
But the flood control district's not responsible?
Yeah, they come and clean the drain in the front, the sewage, you know, it goes through an, it's a...
At Grand.
It's a engineered drain, it's not just a...
They come and clean the intake at the north end of your property?
Clean the intake out, right, yeah.
But they're not responsible for maintaining it through your property?
Nobody's had to, at this time. It's, you know, it's in good shape, it's held up, but it ends at the property line, the back of the, of 802 and 804.
But it's owned by the Ventura County Flood Control District?
I would suppose so, yeah. The...
Mr. Winiger, do we know an answer to that? Okay.
And, I mean, the, the idea of sheet runoff is minor compared to the amount of water that comes through the property. So, that's, you know, that's, the major concern is this waterway, which, there's an oak tree there, and all the acorns are going to fall into the waterway, and then, in a year or two, they're going to be four feet high, and, you know, the water is not going to, and Mr. Ben Turner, I know he was at the planning commission meeting, and he has an explanation for things, and I don't want to step on his toes or anything, but the water, you know, will run slowly through there, but when it comes to the drain, it's going to crash through there, it's, there's a lot of water, it's a major concern.
Thank you, Dan.
Oh, one more question, Susan Francina had the fellow that complained about, that he had a guarantee that nothing was going to be built there. That house, that property adjustment was made with, we think, what seems to be no notification to the public, or improper notification. I think at one of the planning meetings, that came up, and it didn't seem like they had any documentation on notifying the public about that property line adjustment, of the one house.
When did that take place, do you know?
I can't tell you exactly, but five or six years ago, something like that, you know. So, yeah, so now you have, you do have, a chunk of that property was cut off.
Okay, thank you, Dan.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Don, you're next.
Good evening, Don Teeling. I know there are a number of large issues before you, so I'll try to keep this one short. What's before you is a tentative parcel map, and there is no development proposal at this time, but my understanding is that a grading permit could be issued if one was applied for. So, I just have a minor recommendation, the clarification of condition of approval number 14 regarding initial subsurface observation for cultural resources. It's found on page 313 of your packet, attachment A, page five of 10. The last paragraph currently reads, "An initial subsurface observation shall be conducted," and I would like to request two matters. One, that the observation be clarified to specify who's doing the observation, I don't think it's meant that the backhoe operators are looking for artifacts, so I would request that the language be changed to "An initial subsurface monitoring by an archaeologist and Native American Chumash monitor," and then also for consistency with the city's current standards and the language of the preceding paragraph, that any actions in terms of monitoring, future monitoring and management plans for accidental discovery be reviewed by the community development director in consultation with the lead tribal representative for the local tribe here, the Barbarania Venturania Band of Mission Indians. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Don. Teal?
Based, hi, Teal Rowe. Based on history of the lot line adjustment, when I'm hearing this, I have to bring it up, I don't have the legal ease for it, but I know that in the past, the lot line adjustment issue is really big, and so, okay, I just, I just want to bring that up. And I know some people know about it, and it can create hidden development everywhere, and parcels everywhere, and I'm concerned about the resources of water. Thank you.
Thank you, okay.
I do know that, may I speak?
Certainly, come on.
That Ben is on his way, I'm not exactly sure what happened.
Yeah, that's probably...
I can, can I respond to the questions about the water, or is this not the appropriate time?
Well, I guess it's the appropriate, well, I don't, Mr. City Attorney.
I mean, the applicant certainly can speak at the public hearing.
Yeah, you can speak, yeah.
Or the owner.
So, I understand the concerns about the water. We have had designs made to slow down the water, as well as swells, that should control and actually, I believe, reduce the amount of water that flows through, since currently there are not any types of water structures right now, and it's just a sheet flow. So, we believe that what we have proposed and designed would actually improve and reduce the amount of water that would impact the property owners on the downflow side.
Mr. Mayor, is that part of our packet, their proposal, is it this one here, typical, where it says driveway section?
Below that, it says infiltration trench.
Okay.
Continuing?
Yes.
Right.
Vegetated swell.
Okay, I think, I think, well, just one second, Dan. I'm inclined to, you know, have a motion to continue this matter, rather than to, so if...
And I would make that motion that we continue...
No second, Andy.
Can I ask to further stipulate the motion?
Just a second, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, the...
I have a suggestion.
Okay, Bill?
I was wondering, Randy, if your motion could include the stipulations that we get full documentation on the history and actions of the lot line adjustment?
A hundred percent.
And then also that we get a full documentation as to the legal responsibility, who maintains that drainage structure through the adjacent properties.
I would like to add one other thing, I'd like to see a parcel map as it currently exists with whatever structures are on the property right now.
I agree.
Yeah. Maybe it was here and I couldn't find it.
I couldn't find it.
Okay.
Are you amendable to those?
So, do we...
The maker of the motion accepts the...
I accept those additions.
Okay, and we have a second?
I seconded it.
Before vote, were there any other cards?
No.
Okay.
Okay, a motion to continue this hearing to, what, a time certain, next, what, in October?
Perhaps the first meeting in October, avoiding having to renotice it.
Mr. City Manager?
Yeah, we could do it on October 10th, pretty big...
Yeah, you're right, it's getting sort of stacked up.
Or the next one.
Well, since this is not being planned, you know, as they've said in the application that there, it's not that pressing, I think we continue it to the, maybe the latter part of October.
October 24th meeting, then.
Okay, all in all, is there any objections?
I seconded the motion, so I probably should let everyone know I won't be here on the October 24th meeting, for the October 24th meeting. I still keep my motion, but I'm seconding a motion to take it to a meeting when I'm not going to be pressing.
Are we legally required to set a date?
No, you choose to continue it to a date uncertain, the difference between those two is two things. One, the applicant has some certainty as to when it'll come back, and two, there's a, if you continue it to a certain date, then there's no need to renotice. If you continue it to an uncertain date, then it would need to be renoticed, which engenders some additional cost, but both are within your power.
Well, I think it's important that Councilmember Blatz be here, yeah, so...
Well, then, in November, then.
Yeah.
Okay.
Date certain, first meeting in November.
Which I believe is the 11th.
Thank you.
Is there any objection to the motion to continue to the first meeting in November? If not, so ordered, thank you.
Okay.
Pardon me, November 14th.
Okay, to November 14th.
Okay.
Okay, item number four, design review permit for a proposed revision is also a public hearing, is that right?
Yes.
Okay, we have staff report.
Yes, thank you again, Mr. Mayor. This is a application that consists of two components. The first is to amend the previously approved design review permit to allow the use of impervious surfaces for the parking area, rather than the previously required pervious pavement material. And the second is a subdivision map for condominium purposes, which would allow ultimately the sale of the individual units. This is a project that was previously approved by the planning commission and the city council, upon the recommendation of the planning commission. As I indicated, it consists of two different components, the property's located at 611 Pearl Street, on a parcel that's about 1.61 acres in size. It is currently under construction at this time. It consists of two buildings, two main buildings that are being constructed on the site. The principal use will be for live-work dwelling units, there will be one unit which is entirely commercial, and then there's one unit that is also exclusively residential. And as I said, those, that construction is currently underway. So, the ultimate development of this property is dependent on action by the, by the city council with respect to the development review permit modification. The applicant has requested modification to the required paving material for the parking area. They have submitted a study prepared by a soils engineer, which indicates that the soil type, which consists of clay in this particular area, is not suitable, does not have suitable percolation characteristics, to make impervious paving materials appropriate for this application. Therefore, they are requesting that the, that the city council approve the exchange of the impervious, impervious surface. That may require a change, or that may result in a change in the runoff characteristics, and as a result, I believe you've been handed a initial condition that's being recommended by staff, this would be condition number four, which would state that the developer shall provide documentation that the modified project will comply with the Ventura County MPDES requirement for post-construction best management practices to the approval of the city engineer prior to the installation of the pavement materials. We just want to be sure that the, that the development's stormwater treatment systems will accept the additional runoff that would be generated by the impervious surface. The second component of the application before you this evening is a subdivision map. This is a subdivision map for condominium purposes. The project is originally approved, would have been a rental project. The subdivision map would allow the sale of the individual units, doesn't mean that they wouldn't be retained as rental stock, or they could be rented by individual owners, but it would allow for the, for the sale of the individual work-live units. The proposed subdivision does comply with the city zoning ordinance and subdivision requirements, and the planning commission recommends approval of both the modification to the development review permit and the subdivision map. I'm happy to try and answer any questions of members of the council.
What was the planning commission vote on this?
It was six to zero.
Six to zero, okay.
Okay, I want to address the first component, it's the engineer's not here, right, who determined, oh, okay, so, maybe you can answer my questions. I'm not, of course, don't have the expertise that you do, but I spent a couple hours, you know, researching, I asked the question, can clay soil, can permeable, what did I ask, I got a lot of answers, can permeable paving, and I discovered there's three types, be over, you know, like, what are the problems with clay soil? And there was this huge slideshow explaining that there's different types of clay soil, and that permeable paver can work. So, I want to know, has, did you, you know, it's a little bit, I have to, I have to ask these questions because these, these decisions are cumulative, and we want our, the new projects to be as green as possible. So, I, I'm not in favor, I want to make sure that you, that all the different types of permeable, the three different types of permeable paving have been considered, have you really exhausted? It's hard for me to believe that something can't be done, except pave it over the old way.
Sure. The recommendation for not using permeable pavers was actually brought up by the soils engineer, and his thinking, his reasoning was, this site is covered with what he called a heavy clay, which is a very thick clay. So, what happens with clay, when you get water in it, it swells, and it goes in and out and up and down everywhere, unless it's confined. The problem with a heavy clay is you don't get permeability. The Ventura County Stormwater Technical Guidance Manual won't let you percolate in soils that have less than half an inch per hour percolation rate, and this is, this doesn't even have a tenth of an inch. Under, under the clay, the thick clay, the dense clay, is 10 to 15 feet deep at this site. Underneath that is what's called a silty clay, which has a little bit more permeability, but still not adequate.
but still not adequate. Another thing that goes into this, if you're percolating water into the ground, your water table has to be no more than five feet closer to the bottom of your percolation basin. The water table at this site is somewheres between 10 and 12 feet down. So if we were to go 10 feet down, we're still in the dense clay, so you're not going to have permeability. If we were to put permeable pavers on top of the clay and compact everything the way we're supposed to for, for driving surfaces, once you got water into that clay, it would destroy the subbase, and you would end up with ruts in your paving. It would, it would be plastic rather than firm the way you would want it for driving areas.
So, um, maybe, maybe...
I should state, my name's Randy Toder. I'm with RW Toder LLC. We're civil engineers in Ventura County.
Well, so are you gonna do, what are you gonna do about the water? Maybe, maybe...
Well, there's, there's two ways in, in the technical guidance manual to handle stormwater runoff. First is what's called volume-based, and that's percolation. You have a certain volume that you percolate into the ground. The other is called flow-based, and if you can't use volume-based, you have to use flow-based. And the stipulation in, in flow-based is, you have to treat 50% more than, if you come up with a value of treating 1,500 gallons, you have to treat 50% more than that, or 2,250. At, at this site, we have filters that are proposed that are treating more than 50%. We're in the 200 to 250% of treatment for the stormwater. So we're over and above the minimum that the county technical guidance allows, or calls for, not allows.
Did I follow up on your question, Susan?
Yeah, yeah.
So are you saying that your current design would meet the NPDES requirement?
Yes.
And you're able to treat more water and, and sink it, or just treat it and discharge it?
It's treated and discharged.
So it is, it's not being sunk, it's being discharged?
Correct. It's cleaned and then discharged.
Are French drains, uh...
Same deal. If you put French drains in, if we had a storm drain out in the site, we could do what's called bioretention, which allows water to filter through soil, but it takes a minimum of two feet of that soil, and we don't have a storm drain outside, and we don't have the grades on site that would allow any biofiltration.
I have other questions on another subject.
Yeah, I just want to, you know, I've worked in that zone. I've worked in that area, and that soil is probably the worst in Ojai, first of all.
It was a duck pond for a reason.
Yeah. We had, um, what's the street running, uh...
Fulton?
Yes, Fulton. And we, Greg Grant and I were there looking at the landscaping in that, and also the, the roads that were, you know, the asphalt that was put in there. And those roads were sinking and swelling and just all types of problems. We planted probably 15 to 25 California sycamores, and half of them are, are dead, and half of them are, it's just not a healthy soil environment for anywhere in Ojai.
I have another question.
Questions of staff or the applicant?
I do.
Yeah, okay.
But it's a question for Mr. Winiger, not for you.
Thank you.
Mr. Winiger, there are some common areas...
Yes, sir.
...in this development. Obviously, the maintenance and repair of a common area as originally permitted is very clear.
Yes.
Not so clear is how, in this documents that I can see, is the maintenance and repair responsibility for airspace condos, or especially if it's a mixture of rental and airspace condos in this development. I don't see any documentation as to how that responsibility is clearly delineated.
There would be a requirement, it's a, in any kind of condominium subdivision, state law requires the formation of a, in this case, it would be a property owners association, because it's a commercial, it's a, it's a mixed-use project, and the, and the Department of Real Estate would require that that property owners association maintain a, a balance and reserves in their account to take care of the common area maintenance.
I know about how that, and how hard it is to enforce those, and how most HOAs don't have proper reserve requirements statistically. But what happens if some are rentals and some are airspace ownership?
Well, there would, there will be an ownership to all the space, so even if this developer retains, say, four of the units, they will, they'll have 50% of the responsibility. But there would be a, a common association that would be proportional to the amount of ownership of the units.
Is there any, was any rationale or explanation provided as to why a change was being applied for during construction?
That would be a question for the applicant.
Okay. Is the applicant here?
Oh, okay.
Is that okay to ask the applicant that question?
For the hearing, or is it open?
You might open the public hearing and have the applicant speak to that question, any, any other points they wish.
Hearing's open.
My name's Rick Nielsen. You know, the main reason we had is, we've had an overwhelming amount of current Ojai residents that have come by site, really telling us the need for purchasing condos with nothing new. And it's just been, it was very overwhelming and eye-opening to us, and then that's when we decided to go through that process. And I've probably had over 75 to 100 people come through the site with some real intentions.
How does that compare to the number of people interested in rentals?
We've had about eight, and it's all been on the commercial side, on our commercial units. So, you know, the realtor we work with is Eric Wild here in town, a close friend of mine, and, you know, we first...
Because we hear overwhelming demand for rentals all the time.
Yeah, and it's all been on the commercial side. I haven't had anybody on the residential side.
I'm, I'm not speaking about your property. It's just we hear constantly...
Yeah.
...the excess demand for rentals, for residential, that are, is everywhere. We hear that constantly.
Yeah, we just haven't seen it, but I definitely believe you.
I, I just have a question. Obviously, in, in planning this development, you did tons, some type of studies, so if your initial studies were for apartment complexes and rentals of that type, how did that study throw you so far off that you have to come back in the middle of construction and regroup?
You know, our, our first intentions are, you know, so we're developers, we usually build and keep our own products, and every, every study we did when we first started was, that was our intentions. Like I said, Eric Wild, he also handles a property manager company up here, and all the information looked that way, and then it just opened up our eyes, like I said, because I'm on site almost every day on the construction job.
Other questions?
While you're up there, what are you planning to use for paving? Is it going to be black asphalt?
No, no, it was a...
I'm sorry if I missed it, it's probably in here.
Did we not supply them with the full...
The reason I ask is because now...
It's a stamped concrete.
It's standard concrete?
Stamped, colored concrete, stamped colored concrete.
Oh, that sounds nice, yeah. Just because of the heat factor, people are more and more aware of that.
Yeah, of course, no, I thought you guys had the full, I think that was submitted.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? If not, we have, okay, thank you. Brian, did you have something you wanted to...
Yeah, just a quick question. Living in Oakview, I can't drive by these properties every day, but is the house still intact, or has the house been taken down? The one on Pearl Street?
Yeah, the house.
Oh, different property? Yeah. Okay.
We're under construction on Pearl and Fulton.
Okay, so you're, you're a little bit further east from the house? Yeah. Okay, big sigh of relief, thank you.
I don't know, we'll see if it's there.
Are there any cards?
Okay, so now...
Cards, okay.
Is the owner going to speak?
Are there any other questions?
I see Mr. Grant lurking.
Should I speak to permeability?
Did he want to, is that okay?
Sure.
I see him lurking.
I'll take care of it, Bill.
Good evening, counsel. I just want to quickly mention that the infiltration issue on that area with the clay that Councilman Haney brought up, yeah, is some stiff clay, and it doesn't remove the requirement for on-site infiltration and storage, they still have that requirement.
Oh, good.
It's just that the, the MS4, they call it the municipally separate stormwater system regulations have, if it's technically infeasible, which this report shows it is, if it's difficult, they have a reduced requirement for other types of retention, storage, and cleanup of that stormwater. So they still have to do a design and to make that acceptable to the city before they proceed.
Thank you. Okay, all right.
Any other...
Is the owner going to speak now?
Okay, I guess it's time to close the hearing?
We're both at two hours.
Oh, okay. The other owner, I mean, yeah.
Okay. Now we'll close the hearing and deliberate.
I have, I just express a one thought to start out with, if that's okay. I have to, I mean, I have a, I have to admit, when I saw this first time, I had a concern about a project that was presented for approval as a rental development, and then being converted into something else, which, an ownership option, which does change the character of development. And I, I know the Planning Commission's been okay with this, but I still, as a council member, have a concern with it, because we hear constantly about the shortage of rental units in this community. And I'm also unfortunately had experience with the problems with HOAs for maintenance and repair that are way more problematical than having a single owner responsibility. I'll state for the record, again, most HOAs do not maintain proper reserve requirements, and that's just a matter of, of, you know, lots of surveys have shown that. And I just, I just have a concern about, I have to admit, I have a concern about starting out one way and changing to something else that, that is of a different character and problematical, I think more problematical than a single point of responsibility, clear single point of responsibility on common area maintenance. The place was designed with a common area, with a single responsible party, and converting it to something that was designed and presented as rental into something that's not, I, I have, I just have some problems in my head with that.
So one of the concerns is someone could buy the condominium and then rent it out, correct? Okay.
Right, but, but you're having to, you know, you're, you're, you're still dealing with, you know, a different situation than a landlord.
No, 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 I wasn't saying that as a plus. I was saying that, that in itself can be problematic.
Yeah.
Because you have, you know, all these different owners and that have to answer to an individual, all these different renters, potentially renters answering to different owners, yeah.
Okay, well, do we have a motion to start working with?
Mr. City Attorney, I assume that this can be handled in two pieces? In other words, the...
Yes, the council can divide up the two requests.
Yeah, well, I'm going to make a motion for purpose of discussion to approve the proposed revision of the paving materials approved under design review permit, DRP 13-18, but to, but to not approve the change into a subdivision into eight condominium parcels and one common area parcel.
Okay, is that one motion?
That's one motion. I can divide it if you'd like, but that's my, my first attempt.
See, there's a second first.
Okay, do we have a second? I'll second. Okay, we have a motion and a second.
Would you state the motion one more... One more time?
My motion was to, I'd be happy to divide the question. My motion was to, in summary, to approve the revision to the paving materials, but to decline the approval of the tract map.
I think we should do two motions, that's too serious.
Okay, well, then I'll, I'll withdraw and say, first motion is to approve the proposed revision to the paving materials.
Okay, I'll second that.
All right.
Okay, any further discussion? So I assume all of our laws on drainage, flood control, you know, retention of water, all that stuff...
NPDES.
...are still in place, and it's just simply acknowledging that what the gentleman described as, what, a plasticity to clay under, with water in it, so the idea of having impermeable clay is not desirable. My initial question was, if it's going to be impermeable, why not just go ahead and leave it the way it is?
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Okay, so any other comments regarding that?
Mr. Mayor, if I could just respectfully ask that the motion include condition number four?
Yes, I'll amend my motion to say the addition of condition DRP 17-02, that the developer shall provide documentation, the modified project will comply with the Ventura County NPDES requirement for post-construction best management practices to the approval of the city engineer prior to the installation of the pavement materials. So if we have complaints, we know to go to.
Yeah. All right.
Okay, is there any further discussion on the motion? If not, roll call.
Mayor Johnston?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Wierich?
Yes.
Councilmember Blatts?
Yes.
Councilmember Francina?
Yes.
Councilmember Haney?
Yes.
I'll make a second motion, if that's in order...
Yes.
...to decline approval of tentative tract map 5995, TTM 17-01, for the subdivision of one parcel into eight condominium parcels and one common aerial parcel for the project at 611 Pearl Street.
Is there a second to that? I'll second that.
I'll second, okay.
Okay, it's moved and seconded, discussion.
I have a couple of questions, just thinking out loud about it. Mr. Summers, I'm, I'm just tossing a few thoughts around. Is it possible to approve the condominium concept and then say it has to be owner-occupied?
I'm thinking the, I'm not familiar with another city that has done that outside the context of owner-occupied affordable condos, where there's an affordability requirement or else federal estate money that forces it to be maintained owner-occupied. The, the basis would be, is there, that would amount to a severe restriction on the, on the alienability of the property, and thus a significant hit to its price. Is there a basis to support that? On the facts that we have, I'm not sure that that would stand, would withstand review absent that kind of an affordability restriction. Those you can require owner-occupation. Similarly, as we know with ADUs, you can require that half the property be owner-occupied, but in that case, you're still allowing them to rent out the other units.
Mr. Mayor, I want to request that the owner be allowed to respond if you did, is...
The hearing has been closed.
Okay, well, I guess I'm requesting that it be open, because I want to be clear on that point.
What is it you're asking?
He, they want to speak on this.
No, what is your question?
My, I, I want to know what they want to say.
Well, the purpose of closing the hearing is that everybody was given the opportunity to discuss it. Would the council like to reopen the hearing?
Well, I'm sorry to open.
I have no desire.
Okay, all right.
So the, did you get an answer, Paul, to your question from the attorney?
Yeah. My only, my, one of my concerns is we're going to have a project that could be mixed between owner-occupied and unowner-occupied. To me, it seems a lot cleaner if it's all rental or just all owner-occupied. It seems cleaner to me that way.
Exactly.
And there is a need for rentals.
And there's a need for rentals. Now, whether or not, and, and the applicant said that there was a need, there was a showing for need for the commercial rental, but then what's the, what's the other component? I mean, you, you have a commercial portion and you have a residential portion. Is the owner going to live in the residential and rent out the commercial? Or is the residential going to be empty?
And it seems...
Yeah, or vice versa.
Susan?
Seems like there's plenty of condominium, there's always condominiums for sale, and there's not always rentals, there's, you know, so...
Yeah, there have been apartment buildings that have been converted to condominiums later on if there isn't a market for the, the rental market. I'm sure there's a rental market.
Okay, so, so that, okay, that's, that's, that's a point that would help me to decide. If they can come, if they can't rent it, they can come back and ask?
Well, they can always come back, whether they can rent it or not rent it, but right now, the question before us, I think, is the policy issue of are we, it was originally approved to create rental stock?
Yeah.
And I haven't heard anything personally that seems that it persuades me that we don't need rental stock.
Okay.
The fact that maybe right now the market might be... The fact that maybe right now the market might be reacting differently, it's fine for investment, but not for affordable housing, so...
And then I'm also concerned that the history of these kinds of developments with HOAs is it ultimately becomes a headache for city enforcement, code enforcement. Whereas if you have it, one ownership as originally proposed, it's clear.
Okay, thank you.
Well, I think we also have to address the fact that, that these gentlemen have a right to full cost recovery, and this is an investment, so I understand that. I just want to recognize that, that, that we're not thinking without that in mind. I mean, if it was my parcel, I'd want to be able to do what I could do with it within the parameters of, of the community. But again, I haven't been convinced either that what you started out with is not what you should continue to develop. I do understand the permeability. Like I said, I've worked in that area and I, and, you know, I, having worked in it, I still have concerns about even putting in six inches of concrete with the expansion index of that clay soil. You're still gonna have issues, and I would recommend that you score that probably on six inch centers, not six foot. But aside from that, again, I'm just not convinced that, that what you're trying to achieve isn't, it might be in your best interest, but I don't think it's in the best interest of the community.
All right.
Other, other comments?
I'm ready to vote on...
Okay, will the clerk call it?
Before the clerk calls the roll.
What?
Before the clerk, oh, my mic's on yet. Before the clerk calls the roll, one point to bear in mind that, of course, the council's action, bearing in mind the comments made by the council in the moment, must also connect back to the various findings in the Subdivision Map Act and the city's code. So I would request that the motion be understood to be direction to staff to return with findings for denial at the, to be considered on consent in the next meeting. As before you, as a resolution for approval, not a resolution for draft...
Right, absolutely.
Articulating in writing in full the reasons that have been...
So a yes would be to agree with that.
Correct.
And not when we vote, yes.
If, if, if that's the council's wish, thank you.
Because a yes means to decline approval.
This would be voting yes to...
To ask for the findings to be...
Ask for the findings.
Directing staff to return with findings for denial. It wouldn't require a second public hearing, and public hearing is tonight.
So there's another opportunity to discuss. Okay, then, are we ready for the roll call?
Just one second, I just, gentlemen, did you guys understand what we just did?
We're about to understand.
Or what we're about to do? Do you understand what we're about to do?
Yeah, you're about to deny my right to sell it as a condominium.
No, no.
But more importantly, but more importantly, of what we're, of what we're doing...
Not a right.
Right now is to create the finding and to bring it back, and we're gonna have another hearing. That's more importantly.
I did, I did not understand.
Right, that's what we're doing.
And one clarification, it can be another hearing, it can also not be another hearing, just, that's your choice.
There'll be another deliberation by the council...
The council would...
After we see what the findings are.
If the council chose to deliberate, I would expect that staff would put it on consent, the council can, of course, pull it and deliberate as desired.
Okay.
Or you can direct us to put it on discussion and not consent. Either way, of course, you have to take public comment before you act on it.
Okay, Gail?
Councilmember Blatz?
Yes.
Councilmember Francina?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Wierich?
Yes.
Mayor Johnston?
Yes.
Councilmember Haney?
Yes.
But I still want to be clear, do we need to decide how, how we're bringing it back? We don't need to, right? It's done.
No, the company will be back.
I understood the vote that just occurred to direct staff to return at the next meeting with a draft set with a proposed resolution of denial for adoption on consent that can be discussed from there.
Okay, it can be discussed from there, thank you. Just want to make sure.
Okay, item number...
Thank you.
Number five, is that where we are? Yes, sign ordinance, staff.
All right.
Matt, do you have the sign ordinance or...
It'll be this Matt.
Oh, the other Matt, yeah. Matt's other brother, Matt.
Yep.
Okay.
We're, we're all over you guys tonight. So just briefly, a couple of comments on this one. Before you is the sign ordinance for introduction. This went to the Planning Commission and was approved unanimously after some debate over several meetings. The request is to conduct a public hearing and then introduce the proposed sign ordinance amendments. As you recall, these stemmed from a Supreme Court decision back in 2015 rewriting sign jurisprudence, holding that sign ordinances cannot be content based, rather, if they are content based, they're subject to strict scrutiny and most fail, and that content based is tested, if you have to look at the sign to know what the rules are, then it's content based, which was a...
What is that word you're using? What based?
Content based.
Content, okay.
Yeah, content. So that, that kind of the reader test that was created by Justice Thomas, in his opinion, was a sea change in the law. The Ninth Circuit has read it a little more narrowly of late. In particular, a decision was issued in late August approving or upholding San Francisco's recently amended sign ordinance that maintained a prohibition on commercial off-site billboards as not content based and thus survival, surviving because it was tested by the Ninth Circuit under not strict scrutiny, but under a different line of cases that look at commercial speech. And commercial speech is less valued under the First Amendment than non-commercial speech, given that the First Amendment's purpose is to protect core political speech, the right of the people to petition their government, the right of the people to speak to each other about issues of public concern, not so much the right to market and sell. The ordinance before you takes that recent case into account and is intended to accomplish two main goals. One is to modify the ordinance as it exists now, to be as defensible as possible under the new Reed versus Tonan Gilbert case, and two, to simplify it. The prior ordinance was a work of complexity and maybe not the most user friendly, although I underst, it had a lot of detailed rules, but it didn't know, wasn't always clear to the average resident what the rule was or was not. The proposal here is to simplify that. It remains complex, certainly in some cases, and could be simplified further, I'm sure, but it is intended to be simpler. I won't go through all of the provisions in detail, a couple worth particular comment on exempt signs, section 10-216-06, it starts on page...
7030.
Yeah, it's 517 or page five of attachment B at the bottom. Added to the exemption list is political signs. This one reflects more modern sign jurisprudence that the city's current sign code requires a permit for political signs that is unenforceable and has not been enforced, as you recall, from the last election. Prior restraints on political speech always fail. We've removed it, it's out, and removed it from enforcement, and we're, this is the process to take it off the text. And instead, we propose that political signs be straight exempt. That remains in place, however, the prohibition on signs in the right-of-way or public property without approval, signs that are dangerous to traffic with, or pole signs. So political signs will be limited to safely constructed signs on private property and nothing in the public right-of-way, and nothing attached to a, to a tree, for example. The PC also revised, the Planning Commission also revised this section 10-216-06 at the end on page 5-19 to allow open house signs, as that was of some contention. The proposal is to allow signs, additional off-site signs associated with a property for sale, rent, or lease during open houses and other events to promote that sale, if they're placed outside of the pedestrian path of travel, limited to three square feet or less on each side, on the two sides, and six square feet or less in non-residential zoning districts. And that they be removed roughly immediately before and after the open house. That was the point of, originally, there was a not proposal to allow such signs, and the Planning Commission heard a significant amount of public comment, saying that that's a necessity for the residents, so that was adjusted to allow open house signs.
Well, it doesn't obstruct the pedestrian path.
Provided they don't obstruct the pedestrian path of travel or ADA access. And that's one that kind of illustrates throughout this is relying on the market to regulate the content of the sign. So this open house sign allowance doesn't require that the sign say "open house" or the wheelchair's name, it's just one extra sign for properties that are for sale, or rather, extra signs for properties that are for sale. Therefore, it's not content based. The city can rely, in most, most if not all cases, rely on residents who have a property for sale and seek to effectively market their property to use those sign, that additional sign allowance for an open house sign. But it's, at its heart, the rule doesn't regulate what the sign says. So it's a creative solution.
Right, very good.
Question on that?
I have a question on the, this section, if it's appropriate.
Sure.
Okay.
Yeah, I was gonna go on to some other sections, but let's take your question on this section.
In attachment B, page 7 of 21, that's in 10-Proposed, 10-2-16-06-R3, additional off-site signs associated with a property for sale lease are allowed near such property. What is the definition of near?
In this case, near would be left up to the enforcement officer. We could put a term in there, within two blocks?
Well, I'm, I'm just saying, I, I see mischief in code when there's words like that that aren't defined.
Fair point. This was intended to provide some flexibility, given that it may be the case that a property owner would want to sign if they're even in court.
But what you're saying is that depending on who our code enforcement officer is, the real estate industry could be facing with, faced with different definitions of near.
Well, I would expect that the city manager would provide an administrative policy.
How about different, over different city managers?
Then you're correct, yes. So we could change that.
You'll have to go and talk to him.
I, I just, I...
What would you suggest? Do you have any thought?
No, I don't really, I, I don't...
That's, that's probably why it's like that, because it could be several blocks, you know, for real estate, you could be pointing, you could have a house that's high up on top of a small fir mountain, and your sign would be, you know, 10 miles down, down the hill.
Well, exactly, I mean, according, near could be, who knows? I'm wondering if, if, I, I'm just, I'm asking the question. I asked what the definition of near was, we don't have one, it's discretion.
So we either go with a staff judgment or something, what, like reasonable distance to accomplish the purpose?
Allowed, yeah, reasonable distance, or, which still reasonable is still an undefined term.
Right, but at least, you know, you don't leave it up to the code enforcement guy to decide that, that would be a policy thing. I mean, it's like what SZA says, if somebody lives on top of a hill and there's only a long driveway, it may be a mile away if it's Larry Hagman's old place, but that's reasonable.
That's outside the city limits, so...
Right.
I don't know if a word like reasonable proximity or no more than one mile or something like this.
No, 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 I think stay away from the no more than one mile.
Reasonable proximity?
Allowed within a reasonable proximity.
Is that a better language?
That's better than near.
That's good, reasonable proximity.
Whatever that means.
And then the second question I have is, as I read this, as long as the property's for sale, the signs could be up indefinitely.
The sign, not all the, the quote, "open house" signs on R3, because that's limited immediately before and after an event promoting the property status of sale, rent, or lease.
I'm just saying, as people interpret code and try to find an "out" in the code, they can say, oh, it's permanently an open house until I sell it.
No, the, the open house sign can't...
I mean, I think we would take the position that event promoting must be some discreet event.
Okay, so then define discreet event.
We're gonna be here.
Are there one-day event?
Or several days, like a weekend.
They have a weekend, they have weekend.
Right, that weekend open houses now.
I mean, I, what I'm trying to say is, I think these, the practice that we're trying to, we're trying to enshrine a practice here without creating unintended consequence. The practice is to put them up on weekends. So I would suggest maybe we, there'd be a time limit on these things of, say, four days to handle holiday weekends. I'm just asking...
72 hours?
Or, yeah.
I'm sure...
But the problem is, is I hate to define, by trying to regulate something, you then create an "out" where someone can say, well, there's nothing that says I have to take these down as long as I declared it an open house and I haven't sold the property.
But when, I, I remember the...
You would contend that if there's not an active event, if they're not promoting an event, then they couldn't have it, but you're right, it would create a loophole that you could close.
Next time you hustle through something, you appear to be the man to go to, you know this stuff.
You can close it with a maximum duration, or you can allow staff to have some discretion in enforcing it.
I'm, I'm just trying to point, I, I'm not against the thing in principle.
Oh, no, I'm, you're right, you've identified a loophole that was left in, we can close it or leave it open.
Okay.
So the closing of it is what, to...
The closing of it would be to add the language, immediately before and after an open house or other event of a maximum of four days' duration promoting the property status.
Yeah, yeah.
Sorry.
That works.
I wish somebody was, from real estate was here to assure us.
Mr. Mayor?
Four days more than they got, so I'm happy. I'm a former realtor, so I...
And Mr. Mayor, I just have a couple of questions, and I'm looking at attachment C.
C.
And the first question I have is, is page five of 30, and it's under prohibited signs, 10-2.1605, prohibited signs. Now, when I'm looking at these, I'm thinking about some specific applications of signs, and the one I'm looking at is D, which is commercial billboards and commercial off-site signs. I don't see anywhere in here what defines a billboard. I know what a commercial off-site sign is. But how would that particular paragraph affect us if we wanted to do a marquee for Libby Bowl?
So there's two comments to that. One, billboard is a defined term.
Okay.
Defined as a sign with a flat surface space upon which sign copy may be posted, painted, or fixed, and which is signed for the rental or lease of such sign space for purposes not relating to the use of the property upon which the sign exists, attachment B, page 18. And two, with respect to the city's marquee, proposed marquee, city's exempt from its own sign code.
Well, I'd like to propose, and that has covered, Councilman Blatz, in 10-2.1606, part F, where it says, "City placed our city-owned signs." I'd like to propose just a further clarification of that, for example, the museum, where it says, "City placed our owned signs are as authorized by the city for municipal purpose." So it's clear.
I agree.
That would be a useful clarification, it picks up a variety of similar situations.
Right. Okay. Then my next question is on attachment C, page six of 30. At the top, I presume it's J now, portable signs including A or T-frame sandwich boards, and then that's prohibited unless approved by the Planning Commission in compliance with 10-2, et cetera, or allowed as specific, specified in section 10-2.1607-R. Do we really need an A or T-frame sandwich board going to the Planning Commission?
Yeah.
Oh, the, the cross-reference there to 10-216-08, if I remember correctly, is for comprehensive sign programs, and bear with me a second to confirm that.
Are we right here?
Yes, that is correct.
At the top of six, six of 30, attachment C, it's, red K has been crossed out and it's a J.
Six of 30.
Yeah.
Right, where there's, in the red line, yes, so the, the Planning Commission approval is for comprehensive sign programs, not for every portable sign.
Okay.
So... And that's where the, the allowance that the council or the Planning Commission made for portable signs is in 10-216-07-R.
I'm not finding a six.
Thank you.
Are you still on attachment C?
That's allowed.
Yes.
Let me take a look at that.
So, or is allowed as specified in 10-216-07-R.
What page, what page?
Which is on, the relevant language is on page...
14 of 21, attachment B.
Or on, if you're in attachment C, it's on page, where'd it go? 17, 18. So I'll, I'll say that perhaps more simply.
Are you on attachment B?
I'm gonna give you page numbers for both because Councilmember Blatz is on C and you're on B, the same text, but different information. So for attachment B, the portable sign allowance is on page 26, 5-26 at the bottom, or page 14 of attachment B at the top, are portable signs. If you're on attachment C, the red line, it is on page 18. Sorry for the multiple page numbers. And the proposal here is to allow two or fewer portable signs per each entity on a property, so that's per tenant, per owner, per nonprofits, if they're outside of the pedestrian path of travel, outside of adjacent right-of-way, and, pardon, outside of the pedestrian path of travel in private or right-of-way, and no taller than 40 inches, and limited to seven and a half square feet in area. And these signs wouldn't require Planning Commission approval, these would just be permitted.
But the private property owner could still regulate if they wished.
Correct. The private property owner could exercise any power they wish. They're not limited by the First Amendment.
So is the sidewalk in front of the arcade, is that private property?
We were just discussing that today. We were just discussing that today. The sidewalk in front of the arcade is public property. The city owns it. And as the community, the Public Works Director has analyzed it, the full width of the area between the inside edge of the columns and the edge of the buildings is the pedestrian path of travel. So, in the arcade, you could see sandwich boards in between the columns, but not in the area that's walkable. That is how the Public Works Director has defined the pedestrian path of travel for the arcade.
Okay.
So, that means it stays within kind of that zone where the, all those benches are.
Where the benches are, where there's trash cans.
Or the trash cans.
Somebody had advertised, they said that they would build memorial benches for advertising if they liked it.
All right. Then I just have one more question, and I'm thinking about the trolley, and that may go back to the city-owned signage, but on Attachment C, page six of 30 again, it's called vehicle signs unless the vehicle is used transporting goods or services for business purposes. It was, it looks like it was U. I don't know what it is now. There's no blue.
I believe it's S now. It's the very end of that first line. The auto red line is a little, not always easiest to read, but.
Okay. Where's the exemption if we decided to put advertising on the trolley?
It would be the same exemption that we just modified a few moments ago, city signs, because we own the trolley. And advertising on the trolley serves a municipal purpose in that it funds the trolley.
Okay.
So, if you decided in a few minutes to approve, or rather evaluate approving, trolley advertisements, this ordinance would not prohibit that.
As amended.
As amended, even without, because it would still be city-placed sign, but as amended clarifies it, to be clear, not presuming, of course, your action on that matter.
Thank you.
Can I just clarify, Mayor, just the last thing on the marquees. You're saying that we're exempt?
Yes, a city-placed or owned sign would be exempt, or any city, sign authorized by the city for a municipal purpose. Promoting the Libby Bowl, which is a city-owned facility, would be a municipal purpose. So, a marquee sign would be exempt.
I have no further questions.
I'm afraid to ask any more questions.
I'm happy to answer any more questions, and in fact, we covered. We covered all the points that I had on my little spiel, so it would be appropriate for a hearing.
I have one, one question to kind of go along with what Bill was pointing out, the idea that you could have a permanent open house sign. What about these for lease signs that are not?
They can't hear you.
Sorry. I said, going along with the same concern that Bill expressed over having weekend open house signs become permanent. I see signs in town, I don't know how many, but there were a couple, and they were definitely used for purposes of leasing or drawing attention to the building, but they were fairly good size, and they, you know, you had somebody right next door with these very expensive artistically-done permanent signs, and yet here sits this.
Cheap banner.
Yeah, well, we had the bed sheet, and then we had the, the one that just says forever, for lease, for lease, and I assume that they're not leasing up yet, but it's been there for at least a year or two. And I'm just, is that controlled under this?
So, this, as proposed, wouldn't, as long as the property remains actively for lease, they could continue to have a for-lease sign. You could add a time limit on that. There's some danger there in that the property may be actively still for lease for that period of time, and it may be to benefit, it may be to the benefit of the city that the developer who sees it on that last weekend decides to do something with it and benefit the city.
So, as long as it's on private property on the, on the side.
Yes, it has to be private property. It can't be on public property. There are size limitations, and there's also the limitation that signs have to be made of permanent material. So, a bed sheet would not work. We could enforce against that.
Yeah, I apologize for that, but.
Well, it may have existed, but it certainly is enforceable.
Okay. And there was, this is probably, maybe not the time to try and get a clarification, but I noticed downtown that, whether it be in the arcade or along the avenue, there's some very nice signs that are hung up, you know, maybe nine feet off the ground, so no one's going to bump their head, and they're usually have like a little, like wrought iron or some kind of a bracket in the sign. And I know that when we started trying to enforce the rules, there was one of those that simply, it was very tastefully done, and it had an arrow, you know, to point around the corner, because otherwise, no one would know there was anything around the corner, and that was, for some reason, considered that the person was cited on that. Does that?
Oh, so there's a prohibition on signs that extend out from a building, and that may, that sign may have fallen foul of that one, of that prohibition.
Or it had a pointed arrow on it.
But it was painted on the wood.
But that type of situation with that set of facts might be appropriate for.
Was it in the arcade?
Is to say, it would have to. Oh, it was across the street from the arcade?
Yes.
That type of sign with those facts might be appropriate for variance from the prohibition, given the location of the property of the tenant.
Is there something in this that allows for some sort of, you know?
Creativity.
Well, the king's conscience, the, you know, the court of equity, where somebody uses some judgment and doesn't, you know, we don't charge them an arm and a leg to get an opinion on something that appears to be okay.
The, there's no direct allowance for the director to just approve a sign permit if it's not consistent with the standards?
So, it means everything goes to the Planning Commission, is that?
Well, the director can approve it if it's consistent with the standards. If it's not consistent with the standards, then you could appeal it up to the Planning Commission.
Well, I think that.
There's a way to do it.
A sign like that, there'd be a way to get it approved.
As I recall, when I was on the Planning Commission, we approved a sign on the corner of South Montgomery and Ojai Avenue for the shops that are down by the Art Center. And because nobody realized those shops were there, there was an arrow or something approved, or the names of the buildings with arrows or businesses. And we were able to approve that, yeah. We were able to approve that under the existing code, so I would imagine we could do it under this.
I think that is the sign.
Yeah, I think you could under this.
Mayor, I have one, one, one of the small can of worms to open up, and that's HPC. And signage on, on historical property, because I remember, I remember this conversation about banners. I'll never forget that education. So, it's the same thing. How are signages in these historical areas, are they governed by HPC, or are they governed by, is it a joint? Is it a single's power? Who's accountable and who's responsible, and who does someone see to get approval?
That's all under the work permit thing that they?
Yeah. This is structured not to require a full work permit, but a historic sign permit, just a sign from approval of HPC. That's in 10-2.1604. Any sign on a landmark requires HPC approval, and if denied, appeal to the council. And then, in addition, the, the arcade, the banners strung between the arcade arches have a further separate policy approved by the council and the historic preservation commission reflecting the fact that that arcade is city-owned.
Any other questions? Okay, let, I guess we opened the hearing. I've got at least one card here.
Could I just make one comment, just based on, on my observations? You know, we, we rolled out the enforcement, and then at one point, we rolled back the enforcement. And, and, and of course, the provision was to not enforce against signs unless they're within the pedestrian path of travel. It's been interesting to see how the, the merchants and the public have responded to the discussions and the actions that the city has taken, and I actually think it's really developed into a rather positive direction. I see signs downtown that, you know, previously had been right out in the middle of the sidewalk, and then we started enforcing. They got pulled way back or off the street altogether, and now they've found new locations where they're tucked off, and they're not right in the middle of the sidewalk, and it appears that people are getting by, so.
I agree. They seem to be respecting the principle.
They seem to be respecting the principle, and I think the compromise that we, that the council came up with in terms of the policy seems to be working very well. So, in other words, I think the direction that we're going is working well, and I think it's going to be very workable for the community as well.
Okay. Thank you, Steve.
You know, I've had the same kind of feedback. The citizens feel like the Planning Commission and the council are actually listening to them of the concerns they're expressing, that one size doesn't fit all, or what was good 20 years ago maybe needs to be relooked at, so, okay, that's all positive.
Right, yeah. I mean, we, you know, we need to do what we can to support our businesses, and we still need to be able to maintain our character to the downtown. I think that's a good balance.
Okay.
Public hearing, public hearings.
Hearing is open, and I have an Adam. Is this Gallegos? Is that? Come on down, Adam.
This is his fourth time.
Thank you very much.
You're very patient.
My name's Adam Gallegos, and my wife and I own Revel Kombucha Bar. I have to tell you, we love where we're located. We have a view of the mountains. We have a view of a courtyard. We have shade from the trees. Parking right out front. The only issue we have is a little game of hide-and-seek we play with new customers. And, you know, I'll tell you, sandwich board signs aren't fancy marketing, but they, they work for us, and, you know, we've found as they make the difference between our business thriving or our business struggling. And I've heard similar stories from numerous other business owners that I've had a chance to talk to over the last couple of months. The key for us as members of the community is to use them safely and responsibly, and I hope you find, as I have, that Ojai businesses have been doing just that since you temporarily lifted the ban, which, which we seem to have just spoken about. We've been using the signs as needed, but keeping them out of the pedestrian path of travel. I'm asking you to please adopt the recommendation from the Ojai Planning Commission and permanently adjust the wording of the sign ordinance so businesses who depend on sandwich board signs can use them in a manner that is safe and responsible.
Okay. Thank you, Adam.
Very much for your time.
People are finding you now. It looks like I went by the other day, and you, you had a crowd. That's good. Is that Scott or Hank? No, that's Scott. I made that mistake.
Not wearing a suit. So, what is it with those sandwich signs now? If you have a business on the south side of Ojai Avenue, can you put a sandwich sign on the sidewalk but close to the wall? Does it have to be out by the parking spaces?
You're saying the south side?
The south side of Ojai Avenue between the post office and, say, Sea Fresh. Where, for instance, if Majestic Oak wanted to put a sandwich sign out saying, "We're downstairs," or "Majestic Oak Wine Tasting here," where could they put that sandwich sign on? Sidewalk, in the sidewalk, flush against the wall?
The comments we were hearing from Matt, it was the north side on the arcade. Is there, was there some decision made on the south?
Or even on, on Signal.
It referenced the public. There's, there's a, there's usually a demarcation of pedestrian path of travel. That's a legal term.
It would be outside the ADA required width of the path of travel on the south side of Ojai Avenue, which is usually four, four and a half feet wide.
So, a center space, four and a half, a lane, four and a half feet wide in the middle of the sidewalk, and then anything either side is fair game?
On the south side of Ojai Avenue, yes.
Okay.
That's what's proposed.
Well, what I think Scott's suggesting is they put them out by the curb where people get in and out of cars, as opposed to?
I just want to know where they can put it. They can put it anywhere on either side of that four and a half feet, so if it's a six-foot sidewalk, they have four and a half, one and a half feet, they got nine inches either side, something like that, right?
Or if they put it flush against the building, then you'd have the full four and a half open on the, on the curb to the edge of the sign, not blocking people exiting the cars.
Okay, but the four and a half feet is what they're working with?
Correct.
Be the same on, on Signal above Ojai Avenue, all the way up to Eliso and Montgomery, all the way up, and on Ojai Avenue, past the arcade, all the way out to Gridley.
I think it's a uniform legal definition.
Correct.
Okay, four and a half feet corridor.
And then sometimes it'd get wider if.
So, it's okay then to have three in a row by the building, and then we have another one out here so that the path of pedestrian goes this way? Is, is there a problem with that? I'm just asking, because you know.
Yeah, I know. You'll get asked that, too.
If the curves aren't too narrow, in other words, the person.
I'm not expecting to have it like pylons on a.
Exactly. If a person, a person in a wheelchair needs to be able to safely and easily navigate, so they can't be, can't be a ski course.
That's all we're concerned about. The ADA thing, four and a half feet.
So, the, the idea of appearances.
The idea of appearances?
Yeah, I'm just thinking, when Scott starts talking this way, it sounds like you could, you know, look like you have, you know.
I mean, the proposal here is to allow a fair amount of signs. You could limit that if you wish.
And that's what I'm saying. How many businesses do you have between what used to be Los Coparales from the nomad, say, to coffee roasting? Could each one of those have a sandwich sign in front?
Yeah.
Or two?
Is there in the street?
I think there is only one, right, or two?
This is, phrase is two signs per entity on a property.
Yeah.
You could make that, it's a draft.
Two sandwich signs that did not extend more than, say, nine inches or 18 inches out from the building.
Depending on how wide your sidewalk is.
Depending on how wide the sidewalk is, yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah.
We may be back doing this again later.
Just one clarification. That's why I'm here.
And I think the key there is, is, you know, again, applying some discretion and, and, you know, in terms of applying the code enforcement, you know, if it's a matter of simply contacting the merchant to get them to move the sign a little bit over, or a little bit up, or a little bit back, or something like that, so that we can maintain that travel, we'll make that contract to try to find that way to make it work out.
Isn't it true that the city engineer defines the path of travel?
I believe that is correct.
When we got into all of this, we were attempting not to proliferate signs, but rather to regulate them so as not to be an obstruction, and also not to be littering the landscape either, so I don't know.
I mean, the, the Planning Commission's proposal was to increase the number of allowed signs in order to promote the businesses. The council doesn't have to accept that. You have the choice.
Where did the idea of allowing two on the same frontage come from?
That came from the, as I recall, the Planning Commission discussion, the point that there may be more than one business on a property. If you do one per property, then the property owner is going to sell that right, possibly preventing smaller businesses that aren't as better, as well situated to bargain for the right to have the one sign per property. Or it becomes a land rush, who gets to sign out first. But the Planning Commission, or the, rather, the council has the power to limit it to one per property, or none, of course.
Well, the problem with that is, I think the reason for two is for people that are like kombucha, you know, that are trying to get people to come in from different sides, you know, from Ojai Avenue and from the Matilah.
Right, but then it's a different frontage.
Well, I understand.
This isn't limited by frontage. It's two per property, two per entity per property.
There's actually no reference to frontage in this language.
Correct. They can put both on one frontage or two on two different frontages. I mean, it's worded to allow some flexibility to the businesses to set signage that works for them. The council doesn't have to accept that if they don't want to.
I don't, I'm.
I, I'm, I'm.
I'm kind of rather try it this way and see what happens. We can always change it.
I think the merchants are highly motivated to make this work. I think by making it legal, they're motivated to make nice signs, because they know that they won't just be kicked off the curb the next day. I think we're, I think it's going, you know, I think we need to give it a chance and accept the findings.
I give it a chance, that's right.
Yeah, yeah.
We still haven't opened the hearing.
Yes, we did.
Yeah, we did.
Have we closed it?
Adam was our first speaker. Thank you, Adam.
Is it we have anymore?
Okay, well, okay, I'm going to close the hearing unless Steve has something he wants to add. I shouldn't have said that, should I?
Shouldn't have said that. You invited them up here, and you know.
Thank you, Mayor, and council members. I'll make this very short. You've changed the open house sign portion of this. I have no objection to that, but I wanted to let you understand the discussion at the Planning Commission that led to the decision that we had made.
Yeah.
You can imagine that if there is an open house, that there may be a sign on Ojai Avenue, and then depending on how circuitous the route is to the open house, there may be multiple signs that say, turn left here, turn right here, get in the arbolada, who knows how many turns a person might have to make to find the open house. The second thing is, and this came from a Realtor on the Planning Commission, if you leave, if, if you put up open house signs on Friday of a four-day weekend, and you leave them up all night for three nights, many of them will walk away. And so, the Realtors who put up those open house signs, put them up shortly before the open house starts during the daylight hours, and as soon as they have closed the business for the day, they go around and collect all those signs and save them for the next day. So, I, I didn't have any objection to your changing it to saying no longer than four days, but I think it's unnecessary.
Yeah.
Thank you.
It's just trying to, so they had no objection then to. So, I'm, have we closed?
Do you have any concern, Steve, about what the, the language as to how close to the property the signs could be?
I thought we left it.
Was that covered by what you just said, that, you know, that people, you know, obviously, if you're trying to get people's attention two blocks away?
It's, it's in the best interests of both the property owner and the Realtor to put a sufficient number of signs out and sufficient distance from the property to allow people to find the property that is for sale or lease. That's all. Any, any word that you use, reasonable. use reasonable distance near, it's all so squishy that I don't think it really matters.
Yeah. Okay. Good.
Okay.
Didn't want to make it worse.
Uh, in the interest of time, I'm going to move approval of the introduction of ordinance TA seventeen dash oh one revising Article sixteen of chapter two of Title ten and amending section ten dash two point three six oh two subdivision S X defining sign of the Ojai Municipal Code as amended.
I'd like to admit second.
Have closed the hearing after Steve sat down. Okay. Go ahead. You got a second?
I'd like to second that. Yeah.
Okay. You got a motion and a second. Uh, I don't know. There's anything left to discuss?
We beat those signs.
Okay. Gail, call the roll.
Mayor Potemwirik?
Yes.
Councilmember Francina?
Yes.
Councilmember Haney?
Yes.
Councilmember Blatts?
Yes.
Mayor Johnston?
Yes.
Okay.
Signs. Maybe we are assigned.
Yeah. God help us. Yeah. Okay. Ojai Trolley Fair Service. Ah, Mr. Grant is here. I knew he was hanging around for something other than listening to my jokes.
Oh, I guess he's got another PowerPoint for us.
Yes. Are you ready to begin this?
A brief PowerPoint, right, Mr. Grant?
A quick PowerPoint.
Yes. So, uh, yes. Good evening, council and mayor. Uh, just to reintroduce this topic, it's the Ojai Trolley Fair and Service Modifications, as well as the sponsorship and advertising issues that were brought up at the last meeting for the trolley. And as, as a recollection to what the issue was in the past, you know, we had the trolley, based on the current, the current trolley operation, the Transportation Belt Act with the state has guidelines that will reduce TDA funding by approximately $80,000. Since the trolley fund is presently balanced, this will create a deficit in the fund. This was initially reviewed and at the June twenty seventh meeting with the council, which is when the council directed staff to conduct a public outreach meeting for the proposed fare increases and the service changes. Again, at the July twenty fifth meeting, council reconsidered the topic and council requested information on potential advertisement revenue as well as electronic fare, uh, cards and media. Uh, both those two meetings were public hearings in which residents provided comments to the council regarding the proposed changes. Staff recommends implementing the proposed fare increases and service reductions as soon as possible to avoid the penalties being assessed on the current operations. So as a reminder, uh, this is, last year was a grace period when we weren't making that fare box recovery ratio we've all talked about, and this year is our assessment year. So this is being calculated as we speak, uh, with an approximate $89,000 shortage. That would be the reduction in funding we'll receive from TDA. Uh, staff estimates that in response to the request for trolley advertising and sponsorship consideration, that we could generate approximately $20,000 to $40,000 per year in revenue. So it is pretty substantial, more than what we had looked at approximately five years ago. Uh, with all of the following actions, the service reductions, the fare increases, and the exterior advertising program, the fare box recovery ratio would be reduced to roughly $9,000 to $28,000. So it's a substantial reduction. And keeping in mind that the cost of operations are split with the county, the likely scenario would be a split with the county, about half of that would be the city and half be the county. That is a presumed situation. I wanted to remind the council that the county has, uh, which shares this operational cost, has never had to provide general fund revenue to support the transit operations before, similar to the city. So it's not a given that they would support, uh, putting in general fund money. They have a couple other operations they contribute similar to the trolley, uh, over in the Santa Clara Valley as well as up in, uh, up in the Thousand Oaks area. And, uh, I should mention that a representative from the county, Dave Fleisch, the county transportation director, is here tonight. If there's any questions, he would be glad to, to discuss those with the council. And I'll, I'll run through this brief, uh, PowerPoint to remind you of a couple of issues here. Uh, that fare box recovery ratio, which is the total locally generated funds, which is generally fare box divided by the total expenses of the trolley. Right now, the, that's often used as an efficiency measure for TDA and FTA, the federal and state grant people. The current fare box recovery ratio is nine percent. The TDA is now requiring 20%. I think we went through that before. And the current penalty is $89,000 per year. That's the timeline we're on. So you can see two thousand seventeen and eighteen, the penalty that is the year we're presently in, and the penalty is being determined based on the shortfall for this year. The next year is considered the determination year. They wait till all the financing is complete, and then they penalize you in the year after. So when the books close this year, whatever the total expense revenue ratio is, will determine our penalty. And that's important.
Could you explain what the penalty is or why it's called a penalty?
It's because TDA is going to take the grant money that was allocated for the city, and they're going to take that differential money where we're short on the fare box recovery ratio and do a direct deduction from it.
So based on the lack of ridership?
Back, based on not meeting this fare box recovery ratio, which they consider to be a, an efficiency ratio, they use, uh, they expect you to generate at least 10% of your total expenses and revenues as fare box in a rural area and 20% if you're in urban area. So we are in a urbanized area, have, have been since the year two thousand, and they started enforcing this last year. So in some respects, we could be on the positive side for seventeen years they didn't enforce it. And, uh, on the other side, it's painful to have to have enforced now.
I have a question.
Yeah.
I have a very novice question on this. Why are we a member of this organization?
Because they.
What do they do for us?
They provide a substantial part of the funding for the trolley. Without that funding, I mean, there's a penalty of 89,000, but that would be a smaller portion of the total funding they provide.
And the total funding that they're, they're providing us?
Trying to remember the number. Do you remember the TDA funding portion?
Total funding.
Four hundred?
Three hundred and eighty-four hundred thousand.
Yeah. It's about three eighty-four hundred thousand that they provide. And if we can achieve this fare box recovery ratio, they just continue with that. But if you can't, they take that differential and deduct it from that total allocation.
Greg, I know if I'm jumping ahead on you, but the, uh, the recommended rates, how do these, are these compared to what being charged in other urban areas as being a reasonable likelihood and not discourage ridership?
You are jumping a bit. So if I could.
Okay.
Okay.
Got it.
And then, uh, the advertising revenue that Councilman Blatts brought up with support from other councilmen, uh, it is the exterior advertising is probably the biggest change we're bringing back to you for your consideration, but it's, it's high exposure. Obviously, the exterior is where the big money is advertisers are interested in. Uh, we should be, I'm sure you're thinking about it, but consider the aesthetics that will have an impact, a commercial impact on what the appearance of these trolleys is. There is also interior advertising. You see, especially in large commuter type subways and buses and so on, you'll see strip advertising up in the corners. Those are relatively low income, and they're, they're much better in high commuter traffic. In ours, it'll be very low value. There's other advertising that could be considered, like sponsored service days. You know, you might say, uh, you know, today's ride brought to you by XX company. And, uh, so you could have something like that in the trolley or on the outside of the trolley. Uh, you could also do bus stop advertising. You'll see that with Gold Coast. And then you could do special literature and so on on the trolleys. Uh, and here's a couple of examples of what different transit organizations look like with their advertising. Gold Coast on the top left, they have these big strip advertising up there. On the top right, that's Carpinteria. They advertise only on the back. Uh, their side is really just saying that it's the, whatever, the beach shuttle, I think they call it. Um, and then Moro Bay has very similar trolleys to what we have, and, uh, you can see their advertising on the sides. And then the downtown Ventura, they started this, they call it a trolley. They're actually looking to fund more of a trolley like ours, and, uh, that goes from downtown to the harbor. So this is the exact same model that we have. You can see some big banners of advertising that could be put on each side, a couple on each side, and one or two or three in the back in smaller places. And then, uh, and actually, I think, uh, our trolley, we have a flat back now in these trolleys, on our trolleys, right?
They still have the three, they've split the three frames.
Split three.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's concert and lugby hole.
And, uh, here's the exact same trolley that we have. This is up in York Beach, up near Boston, but it's the same trolley, and you can see how much they've pushed into that side. Here, here's one up and.
Can you back that up a little?
Uh huh.
So that's fully loaded. That's just sign, sign everywhere. A sign on. I mean, one of the ideas that we buy these type of trolleys is, is they're distinct. They stand out. And as much as I'm be, be for this, I also have a sense that it does take away from what we, you know, what we're trying to achieve. It's a tough one.
We have a nice table that summarizes the benefits cost wise to this kind of thing. But yeah, the aesthetic impact is significant. Uh, and then you've got the Boston trolley, they went a little bit smaller scale. So you could vary how much advertising you have to try to keep it more tactful. And then, of course, San Francisco, they've got them on their classic, uh, yeah, they're, they're big on it there. Uh, this is Moro Bay. So Moro Bay, I think is the city, uh, and I think you all recall Austin Nostrup is our supervisor for the trolley. And, uh, they were having trouble filling theirs for a while, right?
Yes. They had a, a, they were running the operation.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. I had, I had talked to, uh, one of the individuals who did, who sold ads for Moro Bay's service, and they had, formerly had it run by the city. Um, and then they actually developed kind of an intriguing partnership with a local community group, and the community group would sell the ads, um, and then split the revenue, uh, with the city of Moro Bay, um, which is something we could potentially pursue. It assumes that there's a group out there that would be interested in doing that. But, um, that way, you know, it provided not only support for, uh, the trolley service, but it also took a local community group that I think they did, uh, recreation programs, um, and it provided funding for them as well. And so that helped to increase the total revenue that they were able to bring in. But originally, they had run it within the city, and they had difficulty, um, getting enough support to put the ads on the side of the trolleys. So.
So, um, Greg, regarding that, how'd you develop your price point? So, uh, I think you're jumping ahead, but it's good. Right. That slide is the advertising revenue you're talking about. How do we, how do we come up with the expected numbers?
Right. Well, yeah. How'd you come up with the 400 and the 600 per ad rate? Do you have an actual square footage of the vehicle and how much available space is? And I, I'm just wondering how.
Yeah, we did. We discussed what available space we had on the trolleys, and, uh, we also, we contacted two media advertising type consultants in town, that, uh, there's two primary people that work with, between the newspapers and other opportunities for the various, uh, periodicals and so on around town, as well as, uh, down, down in Ventura and some other areas. So there's two people. And their input was fairly close. They thought four to $600 per ad. I think we were looking at two by, two foot deep, three foot wide advertisements on each trolley, which we could get five of them. We could get two on each side, one in the back. And so that'd be five times that price range. So on the high side, it varied because we're in a unique market, you know? Some of these, uh, high advertisement tourist, whatever, Clearwater, Florida, and certain places are going to get higher rates. So somewhere in the low to 20, high to 40 range, and, uh, the expenses kind of vary accordingly. Most people want a percentage to go out and find these advertisers and list them and maintain it. So, uh, and then keep in mind, right, you've got to do the graphic design. There's different levels of support for that and printing it and installing them and so on. So, uh, and the regional fare comparison, and I think this goes back to a previous question.
I'm sorry, Greg.
Yeah.
Can you go back one more?
Uh huh.
I just want to, I just want to look at the, so the, so the net, um, through this program is going to be between 12 and 25,000. And what's the deficit that we're looking to fill?
Uh, and I, and I should point out that there's, it's a very, and I guess I put a bullet there in the revenues, that the fare box recovery ratio, key item is the revenue. It's a little hard to get a grasp on, but we need to get the fare box recovery ratio up. So even if you went out and spent $100,000 to get $100,000 in revenue, it, it would bring up your fare box recovery ratio to 20%, and you would have no penalty. So it's a five times leverage situation. So we put that net income, and I almost, I think it's good to see it, but the key item is really how much revenue can we get?
Okay.
Cause as long as we match it with.
That's entirely different.
Yeah. Mm-hmm. So it does cost some money to do that, but it really, uh, because of that five times ratio, here I'm coming from.
But the income from, uh, advertising supplements or gets counted as fare box?
Yes. Any locally generated revenue. Uh huh.
Okay. Locally generated.
Yeah. All right. So here's the regional fare comparison. I know there was some concern with that, but I do want to express again that all of our outreach meetings we had, there's generally, the general opinion that I got was, yeah, the fare increase hurts, but we really want to keep the service. So people understood that. They understood that Gold Coast Transit's a buck fifty. You can see VCTC, they're local. They do one, one and a quarter, three for their inner county. And then, uh, other cities are up in the buck fifty, buck seventy-five range. Moore Park and Valley Express are down below 150, but they have been considering fare increases, uh, to bring up their fare. So they're all under the same kind of squeeze as we are, except there's some unusual situations. Mostly that fare box recovery ratio for the Santa Paula, Fillmore area, as you'll recall, is 10%. They're considered a rural area, not to dwell on that.
And we're not lost on that. We're not. We're lost on that ruling. We got to figure that one out.
Can I ask, I asked this before, but, you know, the way, to me, the way to make money is you sell passes year long, month long, year long. And then oftentimes, people don't use it, but they like the convenience and they want to support the trolley. What would happen if you had, you know, a thousand people in Ojai buying a $200 pass or, you know, just throwing out some, and, and we did a promotion so that we would tell the public that unless you buy these passes, we have to put advertising on the trolley. We have to, we should explain it before we do it.
I mean, there is that.
Definitely tell the public why we have to do this.
Right.
Because they're not going to like it.
We could have a GoFundMe site or all kinds of interesting ideas.
Yeah.
You know, a thousand passes at, uh, you know, two, $200 bucks or so. I mean, it would be terrific. It's, it would be good. We have contacted, I know there was a thing with the fare media cards, which we've talked with VCTC. There's interest in that, and that is being rolled out by them, the new system, and they plan to provide it to us next year, two thousand eighteen, first half of the year. So that's underway. And then also, there's some discussion separately about going to, uh, apps on a phone, which are electric apps and so on. And those are coming out too. The, and even, uh, Gold Coast Transit has got one they're testing. So as soon as they test it, we can implement that as well.
When do you anticipate completing implementation of their pilot system for that?
For the, the mobile system, they said that's actually right now, they're negotiating the pricing and so on it, and they think they'll be testing it over the next, within months. So we're looking at next.
I think it was November was when they would start implementation. Those roll out fairly quickly. Um, so, I'm sorry. All right. Gold, Gold Coast, I talked to the staff over there, and they'd said that they looked at, um, one vendor, um, that they were planning on going with or proposing to go with, and I think they were looking at, uh, implementation in November. And so we would start to get an idea of how that was working for them later this year and early next year. Um, you know, those do roll out fairly quickly, although there are, um, there are costs associated with that as well. They tend to charge, uh, they're either a relatively significant monthly subscription rate, or they would take a percentage of the revenue. And so that's something that we'd really have to look at to see if it, if we can justify it, you know, if it would bring in, if there'd be enough interest in it to justify.
But they're gonna, they're gonna try it.
They're going to try it, yes.
We, uh.
Why is it?
I'm on the board of Gold Coast, and we approved it. We approved the vendor at this month's meeting. I don't have my phone with me tonight, or I could tell you what it is, and it's up and operational. Uh, so you can, you can look at it, but you can actually, um, it, it's ticketless. So even when you walk onto the, to the bus, you show the screen of your phone to the bus driver. There's a photo there, and as long as a, there's a little moving message, and they know what the photo is for the day, they know that that's a good pass for the day. Uh, and you can, you can buy monthly passes. You can buy whatever you want through the app.
Uh, just related to that.
It's pretty slick.
You said that the VCTC has set aside funding to equip our vehicles with electronic fare boxes. Um, and that's going to be, so the funding is released, and we should be tried, be completed by early, the first quarter of eighteen?
I believe so, yes.
Okay. And I, just going back, I got another question. I just want to clarify my mind. Did I hear right that theoretically, if the, we had an advertising program and the city paid for ads on the trolley? paid for ads on the trolleys for Libby Bowl events that increased patronage, which we get a facility fee for, that that would help our farebox recovery, even though it had no net revenue change for the city? I'm just putting a theoretical thing out there.
I mean, keep in mind that you would be moving...
You say it's a gross revenue thing.
Yeah. Keep in mind you'd be moving monies from general fund to, you'd still be moving general fund.
No, I understand.
Right. With the net zero, yeah.
If it was a net zero, theoretically, because the gross revenue goes up, it helps our farebox recovery.
That's right.
Okay.
But pays to market on our own trolley.
I'm just, I was just looking for an angle.
We heard it.
When I heard gross revenue.
Right. It's a little tricky, and I think you got it, yeah, the way that it works out.
Now, what's, what's the reason for not, like, if I wanted to make a pass for my students to buy, it would take me two days, if that, to make a pass. Why can't we make a pass?
We do, you know, I think maybe you're getting to, right now, we do have full-day passes available, and we have tokens available to discount.
No, I mean, a year pass. I'm talking about a year pass.
So the year pass...
So you get money upfront.
Right. The media card, the media card will allow that. We can do extended period passes, things like 30-day passes or extended passes. And I think we've discussed that with various agencies. And they're saying, yeah, those things are all benefits to the user. I mean, it's convenient. My daughter rides the Gold Coast quite a bit to go to school down in Ventura, and she, she was saying what a pain it is. She doesn't have change all the time and all that.
I know, that's my, that's, now, when I have my little granddaughter, who's runs, you know, who's probably going to run to the other end of the trolley, I don't want to worry about change. It's a, it's a...
She's 145 inches now. She rides for free.
But I think my daughter's point, when we talked, was that it's not making her not ride, it's just an inconvenience to her. So I don't think we should really expect a substantial change of total revenue when we implement the mobiles, the mobile app. We might even see a more significant expense, although it would still help. So we'll see a little bump for the mobile app, and we'll see it for also the card.
But you're, you're saying that right now, if I wanted to buy a year-long pass, I could buy one?
No. Not right now. We have to implement that smart card first.
But I mean, I'm talking about a piece of pay, I'm talking about a little license plate.
Could we do it? We could do it, yeah. If you, if you can guarantee us we'll sell 1,000 of those passes, we'll, it's in the direction of the council. If you really wanted to provide it and you think it'd be worth promoting, it could be helpful. I mean, I presume you do it at a discount and...
Yeah, you get a discount, but the dis, but also, you're going to, that way, people, oh, yeah, I already have it, I need, I paid for it. It's psychological. You know, that's why, yeah, like a gift card.
A hundred dollars.
In fact, we could buy a gift card.
Like a gym membership.
Yeah, yeah.
That you never use.
Once you're locked in, you never get out.
You know, it just makes it so that, like, if you see the trolley and you have to go a few blocks, you know, you would, oh, I got my, I think it's, I think it should be explored.
We'll be glad to explore that and bring it, you know, bring it back if it looks reasonable. Yeah.
Yeah, you're locked, you have a monthly...
I'll buy one. There's people that love the trolley that will buy one.
Yeah, you're right.
I'll promote it.
A hundred bucks for the year or something, you wouldn't use it.
Yeah.
That'd be a hundred bucks, you wouldn't, but of course, might eat into your current ridership though, wouldn't it?
We'd have to be careful also not to make it too easy. I mean, if they were, we have a problem, we had a problem, I recall, you know, we have an old-style farebox, we just push the dollar in. And some of the high school students in particular, not to pick on them, but pretty crafty, you know? You take a half a dollar bill, rip it in half and roll it up, and hey, like this, you know? Your accounting bills at the end of the day, half bill, half bill.
Rip the dollar bill.
Sure codes don't necessarily match.
Are you losing money?
Did I just say that on air, but hopefully nobody catches that. So I think they've gone to stretch it, yeah, right, so. But that would be easy to replicate. We'd have to be careful with that, you know?
Yeah.
But I would be glad to look into that anyways.
What do we need to do tonight before...
All right, so let me, let me just final slide.
Mr. Grant, excuse me, excuse me for, excuse you for interrupting. Mr. Mayor, I just want to point your attention to the fact that we're getting close to the 10:30.
Right.
And we do have a couple of other items. One is very timely regarding direction on the league. And then there's the other item that you had requested put on regarding the legislation for the OB GMA board. So just to remind you, our rule...
Now that we've opened this up, could we jump to the other two?
Yes, we may.
And then come back to this if we...
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Sorry.
Poor Greg.
With respect to Dave Fleisch, who visited us from the county, is there any questions for Dave that, I know he had some people at home to help out? Anybody have any questions in the county that we should hold him for? Okay.
Let him go.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for staying long as...
Well, yeah, thank you, Mr. Fleisch. We had an opportunity to speak a little bit during one of the breaks, and so we'll be following with them. Thank you.
Really quick, I'm going to move approval of the proposed resolutions on item number seven.
Okay. Second? We got a motion and a second? Any discussion? No objection? So ordered? Okay, we're on to number eight. I don't know if you saw this, but I presented what we presented to the Ojai Water Basin. We're not going to get, it doesn't appear right now, we're going to...
Are you on, are we on eight or seven?
We're on eight, the last one. The letter on, this is the, we're trying to get unanimity as to how we're going to pick the fifth member of the board. It was three to one. I voted against it because we had made a decision here that we would support the idea of flow being the people to do it. The rest of them, you know, I guess if we're the holdout, maybe we can negotiate, but it seemed like what they did was, is they, they took the language that was developed by flow and, you know, as the criteria by which the candidates would be screened, so that they would be sure to get someone representing the service district. And that if they didn't act in a timely way, it would then revert to the OG GMA. But that didn't quite sell the whole thing. They just simply accepted the criteria and said, yeah, we agree that it should, the candidate should be chosen that way, but we think it would be better that the OB GMA board make the selection. So I don't know. What did you think of that?
Well, I appreciated your comments during the meeting. And I've been thinking about this ever since, Mayor. And, you know, the problem starts from the fact that when, there was no joint powers agreement and no designation of governance for the Community Facilities District, separate from the CMWD. I think that was a flaw in the process, frankly.
Yeah. In retrospect.
Yeah. And so right now, we're looking at how do, how do we represent the CFD, the Community Facilities District interests? If, it could have been handled so it didn't even require statutory change, it would have been just a successor agency, but didn't happen. Do you think there's any wiggle room at all, particularly, I had a thought where maybe the OB GMA could be charged by majority vote to designate an advocate or a representative agency or body to advocate for the interests of the CFD and by that action, delegate the power to nominate someone to be confirmed or not confirmed by the OB GMA? A little different than just having the OB GMA do it, where they actually recognize an agency. And so the advantage of that is that you're not saying flow that could either go or could exist or change or whatever, but you're saying, you're going to go out and designate some advocate for the CFD and recognize the designations under the control by OB GMA, but nevertheless, you're saying, you guys come up with a nomination for the board member that we confirm. I'm just trying to come up with something that's more of a hybrid or blend than having one seat on the board be entirely divorced from any particular organization. What do you think?
Well, you have a, for instance, what might, who might they designate?
Well, for example, they could vote to say, we want flow to be the advocate, but it addresses their concern of what happens if flow changes, goes away, ceases to exist. In the statute, it wouldn't name flow, but so designate.
Because that's a question for someone that would be drafting the legislation. Is it possible to be that?
If legislature was willing, legislative council was willing to draft it, it would be possible. What it would look like in the statute would be OB GMA may designate, may receive nominations from designated entities and then select from among those to appoint one person to the board.
Right.
Their, legislature probably would fuss with the language a bit, but it's possible to do it. A concern that may arise is if OB GMA's board, which would otherwise be four seats, and deadlock's two-two on approving a nomination, then you, they would be stuck.
And what was interesting was a person from Monique Lamont's office was there.
Right.
And I raised that very issue under the system they proposed, which was, what happens if you deadlock? Because they weren't even having it, hopefully, in other words, what I, what my thought is that you'd be, you'd have a, once seated, you'd have a group of five that in the future would then do the designation. You have a problem getting there in the first place, but...
And on reappro, term expiration.
Right. But the legislate, the, the, the person from the Monique Lamont's office, they, they kind of dismissed the issue of a possible two-two, and she got up and say, that's the kind of thing we want an answer to. That is an issue.
And that's the exact kind of thing that legislature will pick up on, even if they...
And the OB GMA board did not have an answer to what happens in a tie.
Well, we also had some other concerns.
Yeah.
You know, the first thing is OB GMA selecting a candidate, you know, now puts that candidate technically beholden to those four members. They're the only, I felt that they were the only, that was the only position on that board that falls under those guidelines. So I had, I had a concern, a big concern with that. Their, their response was, well, if you have a problem with a, with a member, then come and, and we can remove them. Well, the problem is, the only person that they can remove would be the person that they've appointed. The rest of them are all appointed by a different body. Our mayor is on a rotational basis, so it's every two years, you know, the new mayor goes onto the board. So it's just, it...
There's no good answer.
No, there was, there was not a good answer.
Mr. Mayor, may I, may I suggest, we have about one minute left. If we have to take anything up on item seven, I suggest we table this and go back to seven.
This is eight.
We passed seven.
I believe the council, by consensus, approved the resolutions on item seven.
Okay. I'm sorry. Great. Glad you brought it up. Better than just saying sorry.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for the gratification, though. So now you can, you can finish this item, then go back to the trolley.
Yeah. My thought on this is, it was, sure, it's not perfect. And sure, it's kind of an inside, it could be an insider deal. What else are you going to do?
Yeah, that's what I was struggling with, like...
I have no objection to just going along with it.
Well, another process would have been to keep flow in the loop and have flow...
Yeah, but they're not going to do that.
Well, I'm just saying, but have flow as a nominating process and, and let the, let the nominees come through them, with flow recommending the three to go to the board for approval. There's a way of keeping flow, which does represent this 3,000 group of people.
But I think the criticism is legitimate, that if you write legislation naming a, naming a body that could evaporate, you got a problem. And that's where I was kind of thinking.
Right.
Well, one of, one of the comments that was made that maybe helps is they said, the, I think it was Dan or somebody was saying that as long as flow exists, and as long as flow is probably the most respected and best-known organization, with that as their specific purpose, that, that they could, you know, advance a nominee, and it would be very hard for OB GMA to say, no, no, I've got a brother-in-law or somebody, I'd rather appoint, you know? So it's, it seems like it's, it's possible that could be a problem, but also the locking up of two-two is possible as a problem. So I, I can't think of a better solution than that either.
Well, and then the final part of it was, the individual that they actually approve is how long is that individual's term?
Yeah, because the other positions don't have terms.
They don't have terms, other than ours, you know what I'm saying? So again, that's where I get into this...
But that could be written...
Creating a block and...
And that could be written into the legislation, though.
Yeah, the legislation could write in a two-year or four-year term if the legislature finds appropriate. And the other seats, the term is built into the...
So many of us can be removed for cause, but not just because of the, we voted the wrong way, in the, in the opinion of the other, of the majority or something.
Right. I mean, it would...
I don't think that, for example, the, like, the Conservation District representative can only, I believe, be, be removed by the Conservation District.
Right.
That's correct. Each agency controls its own appointment.
Right. And this would be, but...
Including the council. The mayor is, is the appointment.
Right.
But the council could choose not to have the mayor.
So there's your one position, there's only one position that could, that's under the control of the actual board itself.
Right.
Yeah.
That's a concern.
That's the proposal that's currently on the foot, would be OB GMA gets its own...
That's the three-to-two member.
What other agency could be designated? I mean, it has to be...
That's where they should have had a...
You've got the mutuals, you've got the...
Right.
You have casitas, you have the City of Ojai, and you have...
County.
The county.
And the state.
And then...
That's where there should have been...
And then it was Golden State. So the only other way to do it is to determine what other agency makes sense.
Well, the, the, the Communities Facilities District should have had...
But it doesn't.
It should have.
Right. But it doesn't. I don't know what other district, would the sanitation district have anything?
Oh, God, no.
No?
They, they exist, but they, as the mayor pro-terms of reaction would indicate, may that be the best choice for this council to recommend? The county, county or perhaps even the first district supervisor could be another approach.
Oh, oh.
Politics, I'll leave to the politicians. Another...
Well, that is one of the concerns they were waving around, saying, you know, if you don't do something, that's why it was...
Then the county will have more influence, and we don't want that, so...
At least the public don't. I don't know.
Well, it seems, it seems like we, we just need to go along with the flow in it and let them be the selecting.
No pun intended.
Yeah. I think we'll just let it go, and if there's a, if there's a problem, well, then we deal I think we'll just let it go and if there's a, if there's a problem, well, then we deal with it.
Yeah, then we address it.
Another point that the council could consider advocating for would be that this council chooses a second member who is not a member of the council and who is a resident of the CFD.
Although they, they're, they're including that. Yeah, there has to be a resident of, of the CFD.
Hmm.
The OB GMA board is, that's some of the principles that they accept.
Okay, they've agreed to that, but they haven't agreed to allowing this council to select.
Oh, no, they're not gonna want that.
Yeah, yeah. But this council could advocate for that.
That's too much influence for us in their minds, so.
Yeah, well.
I, I guess we're all gonna be just defaulting that it's in your hands, Mayor.
Yeah. There is no- Do we have a motion of some sort, or you just wanna?
I, I'll make a motion that we just accept the recommendation.
Yeah, okay.
Second.
Okay, moved to second. Any other, any other whining we wanna do before we vote? Okay. If not, uh-
Greg?
Should I go ahead? Councilmember Haney?
Yes.
Councilmember Francina?
Yes.
Councilmember Blatts?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Wyrek?
Yes.
Mayor Johnston?
Yes. Okay.
Trolley.
Thank you, folks. Okay, trolley. Greg thought we would never come back to it.
We're back at, that was fast, okay. I think we left off with a slide that basically was just showing the regional fare comparison. We went over that. We also, the fare increases, you've seen this before, it's in your administrative report. The reduced service was minimal, but it's, it helps the system out a bit. It's just trimming out, you can see, they highlighted in yellow. On Monday through Friday, we're cutting out one hour in the morning and then cutting out one and a half hours at nighttime. We're getting very low ridership. And on Saturday, same thing, we're starting an hour later and finishing a half an hour earlier on Saturdays and, and on Sunday. So I think this table recaps things the best. It really shows what the options are. You can see our current situation with our current revenue versus expenses for the fare box recovery ratio of 9.3 percent with the general fund loss at $90,000, approximately $90,000. The, if each one of the options, if we do A, column A, there is a fare increase, it, it helps out that revenue by 35,000 and brings up our fare box recovery to 13.5, reduces the general fund loss to 54,000. Service reduction alone, $40,000 expense decrease. You could, it's a good number to see there. It barely budges the fare box recovery ratio because of that, that focus on the revenue side. And then, so advertising is the next column, that has a $30,000 revenue increase with some expense increase, but the revenue is five to one ratio, as was mentioned before. Altogether, will get you to a 17.7 percent fare box recovery ratio, which is darn close to that 20 goal with an $18,000 general fund loss. I think the report-
How is that a 50/50, or is that our share?
That's presuming that the county, and I think at this level, it'd be a lot easier for the county and the city to step in and say, okay, it's a small amount and we're working on it.
But is that dividing that number in two?
No, that, right there is the total amount before the split.
Okay, before the split, that's not our share.
Yeah, these are all before the split, right.
Yeah. At least we hope it's not our share.
Right, right. It's presuming a split. And there's a more detailed table in your packet, because that advertising really has a range. It's, it's very difficult to nail down exactly what we can achieve with that. We might very well start, I would presume if we went down that road, we would request proposals for consultants and agree to hire them and then we would pursue maybe a slow start with a lower advertisement fare, provide flexibility to make sure we can book the trolley positions we've allocated.
But I'm serious, it sounds like the city could be a client.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
And get the fare box recovery.
One other thing, one other thing I'd like to bring up about the advertising, it's more of a, I think we have to look at it more as, as a sponsorship than advertising. And I don't like the way the trolleys look when you have absolutely separate, distinct advertising. I mean, that looks, it's very tacky. I think what we need to do, and if we can't do it in Ojai, we can't do it anywhere, is to come up with some renderings of three or four different types of advertising, you know, the backgrounds or the, the way that it, it needs to look, and then an advertiser would select that. And so it would look more congruous and it would look more in tune with an artistic kind of a look than it would, you know, just in-your-face advertising. And I've seen it work that way as well.
That, that sounds good. I would also, would also like to, if we go forward with this, put some language in that this is not necessarily permanent, that, you know, there's like a contract, it's not like, you know, you know, it's a trial for a year. And if, and maybe in that interim time when we start selling passes and doing other things, or, you know, we're, we're not doing this to make a profit, we're doing this strictly to keep the trolley afloat. And if we're, and we have to, you know, we're caught, as, as is all public transportation in, in the United States, in a bind, because every study shows that for public transportation to be successful, it has to be as convenient or even more convenient than a car. It has to run every 10, 15 minutes. It has to be, people are motivated to use public transportation because there's no parking, you know? So as long as it's, you know, we're, we're caught in a bind. Right now, it's like, you know, the people that ride the trolley are, you know, kids, you know, it's a segment of the population. So, but I think the advertise, I, I like the idea of the advertising that's been kind, you know, in that direction, sounds really good. Doesn't sound tacky, it sounds great, it sounds good.
Greg, when you were here before, was it 40,000 with us having a $20,000 share of the split with the county?
If we implemented all these measures, uh-
No, the first time when we talked-
Yeah, the first time brought it down to roughly 40,000 and then we split it to 20 each.
So it was a $20,000 hit on the general fund for us.
If we just skip advertising and implement these measures.
So by the time we get finished putting out a request for proposal or whatever, we bring in a consultant to, and then we have an artist and everything, how much money are we gonna be spending?
Consultants.
Are we better off to swallow the 20,000 this year and, and then see, see where we are by the end of the year? At some point, it's, it's going to be a, a tough decision, you know, to save the trolley, but maybe what Suze is saying about the idea, if you combine what she's saying about passes and what Paul's saying about sponsorships, maybe there is something that could be sold to the community that, you know, I would buy a couple for my grandkids or something just to-
Yeah, happy birthday or something.
Even though they may not actually ride it very often and figure it's a donation, you know? And maybe there's a way to, to do that. But I don't know, are we getting close to solving the general fund hit, or are we gonna actually spend more of the first year trying to be more creative than we would be if it was just-
I mean, I think that table does recap it. I mean, it's, if we just went with the first two, fare increase and service reduction, it seems to take the number down to a palatable range of $40,000 general fund loss, split with the two agencies, presumably that the county would support it. It's much closer to being something we could handle for a $20,000 hit. But if we wanted to do some incremental advertising, you know, something tasteful and artistic and limited trial, we can request proposals on that and they can take a cut of the revenue, so that becomes an expense, but it still helps our revenue side.
Contingency?
I don't, well, I don't think we need to have a consultant. I think if we put it out for a request for proposal to, to say we need an, a, an agency to market and sell the advertising on the outside of our trolleys, it's gonna come back and they're just gonna take a percentage.
I agree, some people will jump at that.
It's not gonna cost us.
I don't think they need to have a consultant.
It's not gonna, and the, the expense of it isn't gonna, because we can, we can go with the full amount and then the commission comes off, but it still helps the fair.
It's all that issue. Yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to imply some consultant was gonna strategize the whole thing. I meant, yeah, this advertising firm, I guess whatever you might call it, there's two local people that know the market real well, but we put it open, we'd have to, as a public agency-
Can you go back to the picture?
Mm-hmm.
I just wanna see all Hanyi landscape, just kinda look on that.
Yeah.
Wanna see all Hanyi landscape?
Hanyi landscape.
You want the most expensive one?
Artistic, of course.
Luckily, I was questioning how much, how you came up with your number, I mean, I-
Well, I should mention-
Well, Suze, you have a yoga service. You got, you got your yoga and, yeah.
Well, I should mention that, the one on the lower-
We could do a joint.
The one on the low right is the Downtown-
Stretch on your lush synthetic hair.
Come on, guys, that's like-
The down, the low, the low right is the Downtown Ventura Partners. And they have been very successful because the Downtown group and the Harvard group really wanted a connection like that. So the sponsorship by the local businesses are paying an extraordinary price for those to really help make sure it's successful. So that's an unusual relationship. I don't know if we'd have that here, but maybe.
Are they funding that, are they funding that with their Business Improvement District?
Right.
Yeah, they have a, they have an assessment.
But it, but it's a painful hit to them, so they're working with the city to work on obtaining TDA money to fund, fund a trolley purchase and all that.
I, I just, I, I can't resist. I haven't had anything to eat, so I have a wild hair idea. And I just got-
What were your other explanations for your ideas? Go ahead.
Volunteer drivers.
I actually have heard of cities saying that they're available and companies have been interested in a prototype location suitable for pilot projects for autonomous transit vehicles. And we might have the characteristics that lend itself to that, relatively small geography, two-lane roads.
We need to get something for Bill to eat.
And I just, just gonna say-
Cookies out there.
I don't wanna be run over by a driverless car.
And we advertise on them.
McDonald's, please.
I'm sure McDonald's would be happy to start advertising.
I'm done.
Okay.
It's coming.
All kinds of things coming down the pipe. If we can just hang in there.
Well, we do need to give some direction to our Public Works Director or our city managers to what we wanna do.
I want to ask one more, one more serious question. The Ojai Valley Inn has, gives a certain amount, right, that's guaranteed income. Now, what about the other hotels? Why don't they give a pass with, automatically, when you rent a room, is that what you call it?
That's a great idea.
When you book a room, the room has a trolley pass. So get every hotel to pay for that. They've gotta do that. They just, you know, because we don't, you know, that's very, I think, you're writing it down?
Maybe give them a TOT.
I'm writing it down.
All, all of that then saves us from having to put general fund money in at some point, but right now, you need something to-
It's a great idea, actually.
And, and that was staff recommendation and the immediate term is to implement the fare increase, service reduction, and we could request proposals from advertising firms with the parameters you've discussed here for tactful pilot programs.
We're calling it sponsorship.
You could even have sponsorships on, on that car that they find in their motel room.
Okay, we, we reached that time where I need a motion of some sort.
It really is a sponsor, it really is a sponsorship though.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, well, can I get someone to make a motion here?
Sponsor, sponsor the Ojai trolley.
So moved your, Mr. Mayor. So moved.
Okay, so we gotta move, and I'll second it.
And, and it's with the amendment that we're gonna direct staff to seek requests for proposals for the advertising, with the parameters that we want to make sure that the copy on it is done tastefully and not, in a, in a congruous way. That probably should be included in the RFO.
So in other words, they'll come back, somebody will come back, or they'll bring it, Greg will bring it back and ask you if we're tasteful enough or not.
Well, I think we'd bring back the proposals presumably, and we'd recommend one, but we have them available, yeah.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. I won't ask if there's any more discussion. Call the roll.
Mayor Protem Wyrek?
Yes.
Mayor Johnston?
Yes.
Councilmember Blatts?
Yes.
Councilmember Haney?
Yes.
Councilmember Francina?
Yes.
Okay, we're now down to-
We're done.
Reports. Is that it? Are there any that?
You have a question.
Yeah, right, okay. Randy's waved his, I waved mine. Bill, can we persuade you to wave yours?
Yes. You may, you may presume.
Okay, then.
Do you want me to wave mine?
Oh, oh, yeah.
I'm happy to.
You like to wave yours, or is there something that we need?
It's up to the council.
Can you send it out email?
Absolutely. Yes, I certainly can.
Okay, just letting us know what's going on, okay? We're done, thank you.
Thank you.
Steve, do you and Matt have a second?
Can continue that?
No questions.
Okay, we can, we can continue that.